Well.
Or you probably already know my answer.
You've probably got a lot of things going on that.
It's not that much different than Jared and I.
I just brought that, our agreement with.
Okay.
For the first week or something, yeah, we can, whenever you get to it.
I haven't looked at it yet.
Whenever you get to it.
I'm glad we're in conservative.
I just wanted something to go there.
Well, that's my guess.
I plan on in two weeks, if not actually a month out.
It's not for the individual.
We'll get to it in time.
I know, I know, you know what I mean.
Yeah.
I know, it's gonna come up.
Yes.
From there it turns.
Okay.
Garrett, check your email.
Okay.
Garrett. You don't drive that car very far, do you?
I brought you.
Jared, wait. I'm just. I'm Jared. Whoa. How am I supposed to, okay, hold on. How am I supposed to do two?
It's the same size as my car.
That's work. That is not gonna work.
Bring me a wheel for the back one.
I can't do both.
I'm just gonna get rid of it.
Quarter doughnuts or?
I don't know, just donuts or doughnuts.
Some person who's a person.
You've had a, you've had a busy June, haven't you?
I have another car.
I have.
I was, I was.
Share exercise.
The lake.
It was actually better than they posted online.
Was it?
Not like people do that.
No medicine at all?
So that there's less people down there.
It didn't help.
Don't go, don't go, it's terrible.
It's better.
Awesome.
Fuel prices help, if you go down like ways then get rid of people.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, double the fuel price and see how many.
I can't imagine what they are there at the marinas, are they just crazy?
Eight bucks.
Oh.
Seven sixty or something.
Is that for premium though?
Hmm? No, they don't even carry premium there anymore.
Really? That's just like.
It's just regular old gas. I'm sure it's Maverick since he owns part of it. You will be sorry.
Whoa.
Are you going blonde or what color are we? Long bomb.
Talk, talk to me about that, I'm interested.
Ever since they put that thing across her, she started cutting her hair and doing weird. Oh, they're J's. They've got a pole in their office.
We're not recording yet, are we?
Is Robert coming?
As far as I know, I haven't heard any songs, so hopefully yes.
All right. Do we start or do we wait? What do you want to do?
Surprised Dan Balinski got that many people with only three signs. The whole county.
I looked at it.
I only saw like three signs.
I have a, I have a bit down in Mountain Green.
There was a few in Mountain Green and Longwood.
Still love? I don't know.
I think so, when I was out looking, they were still. I've been looking for mine and I don't know where mine are because everybody else.
Fire control.
The restaurant that mountain talks.
Out by the money following.
Are they?
Do they?
A few of them are.
Why? Because it was a holiday.
A few of them were.
Like in law, you get the next day.
How the heck did he get up there?
You need to pay your taxes.
Just for that tax.
So maybe touch him after.
Where were they at?
Yeah.
Along.
That public hearing that we have has forgotten.
Uh, Morgan Valley, right on that side.
I just scored it.
Yeah, we got those.
The argument that it's supposed to be.
Unless you.
Well, it was in a pie.
I just want something more than long. If you see anybody's sign, please let us know, we'll come pick it up.
Yeah.
I don't know where they are.
This is fine, I left town, so I'm just getting back to.
So was this now or was this during the week? Oh, okay.
So this, go ahead and.
Yeah, let's go ahead and start, I, I haven't heard from Robert, but.
So this is the official results, I finished up today. Any questions as you look through?
No ties this time, that was kind of fun.
So Dan got more votes that came in later, is that what happened?
Yes. I just finished up today with the provisionals that we did on election day. And the ones that did come through the mail that I could still use the dates now on it. It was the 27th, so.
Was the goal 1800, Blaine, didn't quite get there?
Yeah, I don't forget it. It was. So the over, overvotes and undervotes, what were that, what was that?
Um, I can.
I know you don't have it here, but just kind of.
Rest of demonstration here. As you can see, these are the undervotes. They've only voted for two.
Which one?
Kira.
Overvotes?
They voted for multiple.
Oh, okay, I understand.
I think relaying it works pretty hard out of.
And this is. What's the intent of the voter? And we, I would vote with Andrew Badger because he crossed it out.
And the same with the exits.
I'd go with Becky Edwards because he crossed it out and go with Blaine because he crossed it out.
Okay, and so the, and this is the undervote?
Undervote voter intent.
Oh, voter intent, so what is the over vote again?
Um, overvote is.
Oh, and I just overvoted, two votes of each of them did decide, okay.
Yeah.
What was left?
And this is undervote.
Congratulations, Blaine.
It's undervoted of the ballots, undervoted. Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So after, after all of the election, we go in and adjudicate it and.
Are you off for the next month, it's in New Year's?
Yeah.
She should be, yes. She was up today, but she had to be there.
Did we have any Democrat primaries?
No.
Do we have any Democrats?
Because there wasn't any Democrats running even at the state level, huh? Interesting.
Do we have any for the fall?
Yes.
In our county?
Not in our county, no, unless somebody with a treasure.
Could throw their hat in as a Democrat.
Be as a Democrat, as a Democrat.
Remind us the date on that, what's the file date?
Let me check on COVID and I'll, I will email you, I'll tomorrow.
So are you gonna stay with us and do this again in a couple of years?
Heck yeah, this is a challenge, why are you?
Jared, why are you doing this?
Good. We appreciate all the work, that's all.
Yeah, it is a lot.
It's amazing.
It's a job, let me tell you.
We appreciate it.
We turn but it's like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Wasn't there a school?
There is, so with the school district, my nonpartisan, Mountain Green and the fire district, it got brought onto the ballot, so it's automatically going to my November ballot because there's only two voters. And the one in Mountain Green, or excuse me, Morgan, there was three voters, so it called all the nonpartisans on the ballot, so. So you'll see the Mountain Green, the fire dis, uh, the Mountain Green Fire District and the school district, number two on the November ballot.
So that means the two that are gonna be on the ballot is Kelly and Minnie.
You're correct.
Okay.
For the.
For the just, for the school district.
School district for.
And they are nonpartisan, right?
They're nonpartisan.
All right, and so the rest of them are all just like me, basically?
Yes.
One person. Interesting results for a county speaker. Okay, so when you got precincts complete, it says zero twenty-four.
I couldn't hear you.
Zero twenty-four, second one down. Precincts completed right there.
Oh, yes. There's twenty-four, there's only seventeen, but with MC, Morgan County, because not Morgan County has a precinct also.
This has even got your blood on it.
It's gross, I'm sorry.
Hold on. Her blood, sweat and tears went into this election, we should submit that.
How did you know that was blood?
Well, it might have been fingered, polished. I was just teasing her that it was her blood, sweat and tears went into this election, you know?
Gross.
We were gonna send it off to the governor, I was like, hey.
Ew.
She really, we worked hard on this one.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know it really was, was it your fingernail polished?
Look at me.
I'm just kidding.
What are you doing? I woke up in a net, I am, how embarrassing.
No worries.
Oh, you got a paper cut or something?
I guess, I gotta go home.
I had a question.
So.
So if you'll bring that into us, so we'll just pass it through to the side.
So as far as the sheriffs, you did not count any of that?
Correct, I called the lieutenant governor's office and they said do not report it at all. And that's, with the same with the nonpartisan, Mountain Green, fire district and the school district, no reporting ever at all.
Okay.
We didn't even count or anything, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So as far as the total voters, then the cast of ballot this year was thirty-two nineteen.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
And so what's the difference between that and ballots cast Republican, what does that mean?
They're just Republican.
Versus the other?
As you can see, the two hundred ninety-one is nonpartisan.
Okay.
So the two ninety-one and the two thousand nine hundred twenty-eight is three thousand two hundred nineteen together.
Okay. Voter turnout, forty-four percent is all.
So what percentage is that, maybe thirty, right around there?
Um, it's.
Not too bad.
That we thought the fifth turnout was.
Fifty-eight percent. Oh geez, I didn't get down there.
Pretty good, I.
That's not a bad turnout.
Actually really good voter turnout.
Pretty good turnout for a primary.
Yeah, Jesus.
Midterm primary.
I thought.
Yeah.
My member that I guessed was fifty-two hundred, so.
We typically have really high voter turnout, which is great.
So.
Not as high as it should be, but it's.
Yes, correct.
So did you have any complaints or anything by any people that say, when can we do this back again in physical person?
Um, we've had, we've had both in our office, so goes both ways, they love the by mail and they hate by mail, so it's.
Did you have any angry ones is what I'd like to know?
Yes, we have, but.
Did you really?
We, or both, we'll count it down.
Did they refuse to vote?
No.
Okay, so they still did vote?
Yes.
Were they normally as, as far as age, older?
No.
Younger?
All ages.
Oh, you're kidding? Okay.
So just a little heads up, I know I came in because I didn't get mine mailed to me, and I did, I was off Thursday and Friday before the Tuesday of, and I got my ballot on Monday when I opened my mailbox, so it could have been maybe four days, four mailing days before, but that's how late that came out, just to let you.
And we had two holidays in this election process that really cost us, I do, with the mailing.
We can always have those two holidays?
The fourth and the twenty, the nineteen.
Yeah, we're gonna always have it.
Yeah, we will, we will.
It's never ran the same since Blaine left.
Isn't that I left?
The mail's never been the same.
Oh, that's right, it never has. I can exactly agree with you.
One, one thing I heard from a voter was be, be nice if it was postage prepaid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And in twenty twenty, we did do that, so it would be nice, but that's a cost the county's gonna take on, and we can look into that.
As I say, we ought to probably, for you guys, because I'm not doing it again.
Well, it's just the same, it's the same to me.
I know.
We have two drop boxes, one out front and one in.
So we put it in our budget, we tax them and they pay.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Put a stamp on it.
It's just convenience.
And we don't pay unless they do mail it. Because just because we send it out as prepaid doesn't mean that it's gonna be.
So if we send it out prepaid, it probably costs more then?
Oh, yeah.
Because you're prepaying every one, whether they send it back or not?
Only if they're mailed back, right?
No, only if they're mailed back, they do not get accounted for unless they are mailed back.
So we pay postage to mail them and then if they mail them back.
Fifteen hundred bucks.
And I would be, this was, I think, twenty-six hundred.
Yeah.
Well.
Fifteen hundred dollars or so that it costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about that, fifteen hundred dollars, and in reality, if they all sent it in by mail, we would have been paying sixteen hundred and something dollars on this one.
So we'll look at. I would probably like it better on bigger elections, like presidential elections every other, or every one president, and see what the difference is.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, miss.
Take your blood away.
I know. I'll grab another pain for her. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
She's making a joke about it. All right. Julie, policy and procedures. A real fun with nepotism and fraternization.
You just said fun, right?
Fun.
I like it.
Have you guys had a chance to look over that nepotism one?
Yep.
Shouldn't be too many changes unless you don't like the policy.
We've seen this one a couple of times in the past.
Yes.
So my question is on number nine, and it may be that because they're volunteers, it doesn't make, it, they're not employees, but, so it says no employee may be involved in any way in an evaluation of a relative for purposes of pay, benefits, promotion or discipline. Does that not apply to volunteers at the fire department? Because I know there are families where multiple people in the family are volunteers for firing EMS.
I don't, this, this, I don't think this.
It does.
It pertains to volunteers.
In the exceptions, it talks about volunteers, so section C one C, well, C one says an exception to the policy requires a prior written approval of the human resources director and the county commission. Exception may be granted only in cases where one or more of the following criteria is met, and then C is the relative is a volunteer as defined by the employing entity.
So it does address it, so.
So it sounds like.
Is that good enough to me?
So. But we'd have to have a written document, I guess, for each of those situations, it says that they can be involved, given that they're a. Yeah, and, and if that's the procedure we want to follow, that's fine, I just. Do, do we want that to come to the commission as well, or just to the human resources director?
I think if we get things under control, we ought to have it come to the commission.
I don't know how many would fit into this, but.
Just kind of quick, do you?
I don't, I'll, I'll take a different point of view, not to be contrary, but I don't care. About, I mean, I think that it's important that it be reviewed by, you know, human resources, but I don't have any particular expertise in that area, and so bringing it to the commission, which is ultimately a legislative body, I guess, and it's, that's part of our executive function, but to me, I would just prefer the department heads to handle it with, with human resources, but if you feel strongly about it, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I don't want, I just don't feel like we need that on our agenda.
Well.
We could just have Mike sign off on it.
I don't mind, I don't know if we should discuss it now. Right now, I'm just starting to feel like I'm getting a lot of backlash from the public, just because I've been out amongst the public as to who we're hiring within the county, different people within the county, and I'm just worried that maybe it's, they don't respect HR yet because they don't know her, even though she has our back. I'm just wondering if maybe we ought to start having multiple people, have a blanket amount of them that get approved by us, I don't know, we're, we're in session two, two times a month. And if we need somebody around and with their by chance following this, and maybe you don't know that situation, or you don't know the situation, maybe somebody else within the commission might, I mean, Matt may know a situation that maybe we shouldn't be hiring someday because he knows this relative and we don't. I mean, just a nepotism or any kind of hiring.
So I'll just explain my legislative philosophy.
Okay.
I only have so many times to irritate the people. And I, when you force decisions that are, to me, administrative types of decisions, and I alienate thirty percent of the public on a discussion that really doesn't matter and probably not going to affect their life at all, then the next time something important comes up that we have to decide and we need to bring public opinion our way, they're gonna say, I'm not interested, I don't like them because they did some stupid thing with respect to nothing that matters, you know, two and a half years ago. And so that's why I don't like cluttering up the agenda for legislative things with that type of thing. I, I feel that way about minor land use issues too, it's like, you know, I, I don't need to know what color of carpet people are putting in their house, I don't. And I don't want to irritate, you know, constituents on the basis of things like that, but that's just, that's my personal philosophy, it's not a rule or anything like that, it's just the way I feel about it.
We could think about how we could help to educate the public so they understand why the decisions that are made are made, because they're following policy or code or legalities to protect the county, there's certain things that have to be careful about.
The, the eight years I was at the county, at Weaver County, hired multiple people, I think we let go of a couple people. Never once did I bring that process to the commission, and all the commission meetings I attended, I never once saw them bringing HR related, related items, they really kept it within HR and staff, and so I'm not disagreeing, Blaine, that there might be that lack of knowledge, maybe, trust, and I don't know what they need to do to get there, but I do know, that's, that's what I'm used to, is not discussing personnel in public meetings, I'm just not used to that, that's all.
I don't like discussing it either, except for the fact that we've got such a small community here, and I'm just worried about the perception we're giving out there to all the people as to how come nepotism's going on in the sister's office, or whatever office it is.
When you, when you have one person apply for a job, how can you even, I mean, if they've got an issue with it, why don't they send somebody in to apply?
I don't know.
Why don't they apply, you know, I, I, I haven't had anybody say anything to me personally.
Me either. I think it's important to have good policy in place, and then in situations like that, if you do have a member of the public that complains to you, I think the simple answer is they were hired according to our policy, and if you'd like to see a copy of our policy, you're welcome to go visit the HR office, they'll show you a copy of that policy, and, and they can go from there, it's not our, it's not our responsibility to explain to someone why someone was hired by somebody else, that's, that's not, and I don't think we should get mixed up in that, frankly.
And if we're following policy, there is no nepotism.
That's right.
Correct, there should be no nepotism if we're following the policy.
The focus should be.
Policy is solid.
A good policy, that it followed, there's no nepotism, and that when there's claims of nepotism, we say, well, those are unsubstantiated because you're claiming that there's nepotism here, but you haven't shown how that's nep, like, why do you think that's nepotism?
So I can agree with all of that, and I'm okay with that, as, as long as we've got the policies set. And, and the one we currently have that you showed us, other than corrections you made, I think is fine.
You're talking, the one that is in front of us?
The one that's in front of us, yes. We need to go through all the others, though.
This is certainly more in-depth than the current policy.
Yes.
And a lot more clear, I think, which is helpful, so.
And the main thing that, that can we all remember, that nepotism falls into a place when there's a person who's managing over a person. We can hire somebody in a different department as long as their relative is not managing them, and that's where we have to be careful, and we're, we're doing really well at that.
So one question I would ask is, according to your knowledge, if we were to implement this today, is there, are there any situations that would not comply with the current policy?
No.
Okay, that's great. C one C, the relative is a volunteer as defined by the employing entity, isn't the county always the employing entity, or do you mean the department there?
I bet it would be, this is Weaver, Weaver's words, and so I'm, C one C, you said?
Yeah, exceptions, C one C. The relative is a volunteer as defined by the employing entity, and I know we have departments.
I would think that would be wording county because we all have to call up the same.
Do we have a definition of volunteer? So it, it could be the county then, as defined by the county?
You want me to check?
Or, yeah, if we, do we have a place where we've defined volunteer?
Well, one thing about Weaver, with their policies.
We need to.
They're defined right in the front, all of the words that they feel like they're supposed to define are right in the front of the policy, but I also will have a master list with all the definitions.
So do we have a definition for volunteer currently, or do we?
I don't think they've included one here, that's one I could definitely.
There is a one here, but is there not one in our general policy, I thought there was one.
I would imagine, but I, I need to.
I thought I remembered one.
Okay, my question on that, one little bit there, employing a volunteer, volunteer to me is a servicing, it's not a paid position, even though I know EM, EMS is all volunteer, but they get paid for doing what they're doing. And I know the state, this last legislative session, session was trying to change that name, that wording, from volunteer to something else, and because of that, I'm just wondering if we have that in there, because we had people at the fairgrounds or the, you know, this last weekend, they were all volunteering, and they were all relatives, a lot of them, you had that junior livestock show, the fair board, everything, so I'm worried about that one thing, but you're the legal mind on that. So what do we do there?
Maybe we define as paid volunteers or unpaid volunteers.
Okay, that'd be fine for me.
And it applies to paid volunteers because that's the only time that nepotism would really matter, because if you're not being paid, I would almost, you know, there's, I'm like, yeah, don't call me, because, I don't know, I, I think that the money is where nepotism matters.
So this could say the relative is an unpaid volunteer and strike the balance as defined by the employing entity, because then it's, if that's, if that's the distinction, that somebody's working at some kind of county venue or function without pay, they're a volunteer, and so we don't mind if they're supervised by someone who's in their family.
Yeah, because there's no monetary, there's no optical issue.
Then we don't have to worry about the definition, although we, we probably need to figure out what's the difference between a volunteer and fire and EMS personnel which receive a stipend for the shift's work.
So the unpaid and the paid volunteer, or do you want to complete different words for the two parts?
I wouldn't call it a paid volunteer because it's not really pay, it's a stipend, like you say, so probably I'd be careful of that, but. Well, again, this is the exception, so we're saying that. And if the exception is only for unpaid. Unpaid volunteer, then we can just say unpaid volunteer, which means that the fire and EMS personnel which receive a stipend for the shift's work would be, fall under this policy.
Right.
I think I'm a little confused.
I think that's the easiest way to do it.
So C, the relative is a unpaid volunteer, period. And then down in C two A, board of county commissioners can just be county commission, it's county commission up in C one, so do a search and replace on board of county commissioners and just replace them all with county commission.
And then at the end of one C, or C one C, you wanted to, as defined by employing Morgan County policy or not?
No.
No.
Just period, okay, volunteer period.
The relative is an unpaid volunteer.
Period.
And then the signature block, you have board of struck out already, but I, I think the easiest way to do all of the signature box is just Morgan County Commission. Those are the only comments I had. On nepotism, let me look at the other one.
So you don't want to go with anything. So you don't want to go with anything on the first cousin-in-law or any of that kind of stuff?
I was advised by Emily that if we go too far, we don't have people that we can hire anymore, so.
Yeah, I know, I'm just asking.
Does Emily know our relation, our, our family tree up here in Morgan?
Everybody is one.
She's guessing.
On the personal relationships aspect, I didn't have any comments to that other than the signature box.
Okay. Anyone else have comments on that one? Thank you, Robert, for keeping it going.
Julie, I think for future, and this is just a, this is nitpicking, I apologize, but I know what I've seen also is versus saying Chair Mike Newton, it's just Commission Chair. So if we don't have the titles of the person, then if that person happens to move on or doesn't happen, then you're still covered in.
So I should say Commissioner Chair?
Yeah, I would just put Commission Chair.
Okay.
Just Commission Chair.
Because if Mike's not around, then Jared needs to sign it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
He'll be around.
All of the signature blocks will be fixed as we incorporate this. I just haven't taken the time to go to all of the ones that Weaver had done, that I've fixed up on all of them. And I'm going to add Garrett Beckenall these two, the legality. Anything else on personal relationships? Is that pretty clear, you think?
They didn't have any further comments.
We will just need to disclose to you who is working in the county, whether we supervise them or not, within a relative.
If there's a pre-existing relationship, when they've been Jordan, just report it. And then it just wasn't, I think more detailed about in departments themselves. The last one we could do really quickly, if you, I went in and I changed what you guys had asked me to do, so if you wanted to look at at least at the comp time, which is on page three, you had me change it, it's number nine, and you had me change it to ten working days, eighty hours, it shall be the max amount of comp, compensatory time allowed. And then I, I went down further down in ten working days of compensatory time. So it used to say thirty.
It still says thirty.
It still says thirty.
Yours does?
Mine. It does, right before the ten.
On the second ten.
The written number is.
The one that was sent to you, mine doesn't, so this is the one I'm going off when I'm fixing it in the system. So nine on mine says ten. So I would make that.
It says ten in both places?
Yeah.
Both written and the number.
Oh, no, I see what you're saying.
On the second ten.
The second one, okay, thank you, sorry.
So I have a comment earlier in the payroll practices. So Roman numeral three, A2. The payroll register will be certified and approved by the County Commission or designee. This may be done by electronic means deemed satisfactory to meet Utah statutes.
That has to happen.
I don't know what that even is. And I know I've never approved one, so we must have designated? Or this is an entirely new policy?
This is something that.
This is the current policy?
No, this is the policy Weaver recommended. I had Lesley go through it, she did not catch that, but she's the one that's certifying it basically and then Cassell sends, you know, to make sure it happens. She doesn't go on to anyone else to certify, she checks everything.
So tell me what a payroll register is.
I think that is basically, it's probably a report that she makes.
Oh, of the, of the amounts that are being paid weekly?
So would that check edit count as that signature?
And then she went, she goes through that.
Except that we don't get a check edit.
The check edit list doesn't include payroll.
Okay.
It seems to me that it wouldn't be a bad thing for there to be a second set of eyes hit it, at least, especially if there's changes, you know? I don't want to see it every time and I don't want to prove it every time necessarily in two weeks.
Yeah, I agree.
But I would think that especially after, if we make pay adjustments at the first of the year, we probably ought to.
Who would, who would that person be then? Do you want it to delete it as is and then her to send it to one of you each week or?
I'd do the docu-sign like we do.
Yeah, we could do a docu-sign, but maybe not every week again, like maybe it could be. It sounds like she is our designee and that's fine.
Yeah.
And we can, we can, we don't have to change anything here, I don't think, in order to do that.
I mean, we're not gonna, we can't change anything, it's just so that we can monitor it to see what's going on, which I would like to see.
I mean, the truth is, it's our biggest, biggest cost, our biggest line item is payroll.
And she goes through, of course, we catch mistakes before it gets sent to Cassell. Today she found a deal and he's able to fix them, so.
Okay, so, I'm not a big fan of reviewing things about which I know nothing, because I feel like my review's meaningless. And one of the things I know nothing about is what people are supposed to be paid per hour around this place. You know, now you could give me the list and I could check it and I could verify it, but if you're asking me to do that every time the payroll register comes, then I'm definitely not running.
Well, yeah, no, that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm just suggesting like this year we did a across-the-board pay adjustment. It probably would be good to have.
Which we did, we did check those, that we did review. We did the payroll adjustment and then we got a separate sheet with everybody's adjusted salary. That makes sense.
Their yearly salary adjustment, and maybe that's sufficient, I don't know.
So what if we were to say the payroll register will be certified and approved by the county clerk?
Or designee.
With periodic review as required by the County Commission.
Okay, perfect.
And then, and then if we have a concern and we have an issue or somebody raises it, then it comes to the County Commission for review and approval.
I'm sorry, where was that again? I lost it.
Three.
Number.
It's in, it's in three.
Procedures, 3A2.
A2, yeah.
3A2, okay.
So approved by the county clerk.
And I always put auditor, correct?
No. Well, yeah, you would have to put County Clerk auditor because she's, that's her title, Clerk auditor.
So that's true.
Yeah.
Or designee if she's out?
Well, oh, I don't know how that.
I don't know how they do, how they do that in the department, I don't know.
They, I don't know if they have that in their works.
Because if she's gone.
We don't get paid.
So or designee, comma, with periodic review as requested by the County Commission.
That's right.
Can you add it? As needed, could you say?
As requested.
As requested.
And we, if somebody raises an issue with any of us, we can say, let's take a look at it and we bring it up.
Okay. We'll get that repaired and then.
Roman numeral four.
Okay.
I think you can strike government. It is the policy of Morgan County to comply with the Fair Labor Standards Act.
And then you, when you're on the next item, on 3B1.
Are you still on this, this policy?
Yeah, procedures. 3B1, you've got Morgan County's payroll period starts on Sunday and ends on the second Saturday following it. It is not a correct English.
I didn't make it up. Warren, have you fixed it? How would you like it?
Probably just remove, it, the second Saturday following.
Yeah, that would be good.
Thanks.
Where's the, where's the thirty hours? Talking about comp time?
Yeah.
That was in.
Oh, that was another one I have.
Four, nine.
Page seventeen of your PDA.
Yep.
Sorry, this is charged three hours ago.
Oh, there's the thirty, okay.
We have a heavy snow season, that might push that one down.
So is, is nine, is the, is the ten working days or eighty hours, is that on the time side or the time and a half side of the equation?
It's on the time and a half. And that, my question is with that.
Well, but compensatory time is not time and a half, right?
Well, that's what it says.
Well, it is up above.
In eight above, or not, in seven above, seven C, it says it's at one and a half times, which is overtime rate. I can tell you what we did at the post office, straight pay, straight, you got a day off.
Weaver does this because they have a huge budget for that.
Yeah.
It's one for one.
One for one.
Well, I would think that's what comp time should be.
That's right.
Well, I was wondering about it, I highlighted it, I assumed that because you would get time and a half wages, that you also were required to get them time and a half. But I don't, I don't know. I mean, if it's just a straight trade, I mean, if I'm an employee and I know I want to take an extra Thursday, Friday off later in the year, then when they say, do you want to get paid, I'm saying, no, I'll take, I'll take compensatory time on an equal basis and take those two days out on us and work it.
Yeah, that's what we work.
Seven C, is that, it says compensatory time shall accrue at a rate of one and one half hours for each hour of overtime work?
Seven C, yeah.
What about as in overtime?
If you work overtime. I mean, if you were to have worked over, if you work overtime.
So is the question?
So rather than paying for overtime, you're saying you're getting comp time at one and a half times. I guess cost-wise, it doesn't cost.
How do we define, do we define all employees as hourly employees or salary?
That's the thing is, I don't think this.
Well, it talks about exempt employees, doesn't it? And no exempt. It talks about overtime further.
Because exempt employees would have, I mean, it's just a one for one, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it says, yeah, time for non-exempt. So all of that applies to non-exempt, so hourly employee.
Exempt or salary.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Because they're exempt from the overtime.
That's right.
Right, yeah. So this is.
Yeah, because A says no employee's entitled compensatory time in lieu of overtime pay.
Well, that's because they can't demand it. That's the way I run it.
Yeah, they're not entitled to.
They can't say, I want, you know, so, because a supervisor may say, no, I gotta pay you overtime because I'm going to need you in February too. And March and April, you know? And that's the way employment works. But, but what I'm, my, my question, if we're going to do the one to one and a half, then ten working days shall be the maximum amount of compensatory time allowed. So is that ten at the one and a half side of the equation or ten at the one side of the equation?
That's a good question. So just, I guess my thoughts on the private side of this is, when you need, when you need employees to work that time, if you're a salaried employee, that's one thing, you're kind of expected, but when you're an hourly employee and you're asking them to work extra hours in one week, that's the benefit. I mean, if there's no benefit for them to work extra hours, I'm not sure how many of them would want to. But at the lower rates, we say time and a half, of course, it'd have to be worked out in a budget where you'd have to have enough budget for it, but it gives us the ability to, and one example might be our roads department, to be able to have employees work a lot of extra time and if there's a heavy winter, and, and they're still willing to put in that extra time versus if the supervisor says, hey, I need you out there, and they say, well, you're paying me the same whether I work forty or sixty hours, so I'll, I'll just work my forty. So I think, I, compensatory, there should be something defined to that. I don't know how great of a compensation is, with the exception of you can put some time in the bank and you can, you can use it for vacation or holiday in the future. But, but what I'm used to seeing on the private side is it's actually time and a half for those that are at a lower wage. Usually if you're at a higher wage or salary, then, then you're not included in this.
They're not included in that.
Well, it sounds like, when I read the whole thing from the, from number seven on, basically, we could encourage them to offer comp time at time and a half rather than pay at time and a half for overtime, if they choose to take advantage of that. So understanding that, I understand why it would be time and a half, because it's in lieu of overtime pay, so the cost is really the same to us. The, the benefit here is that it doesn't burst our budget with overtime pay, because they're just being compensated for time which we would have potentially paid them, but they've been here, they're just not here.
I don't think anyone is utilizing any kind of comp time right now, so.
It could be a benefit.
Yeah, I don't think they're anything to say have it available.
So the other thing we ought to know, if we're going to have this policy in place, is how's that going to be tracked and who's going to track that and what does that look like? Because I could see it being a bit of a headache to track, to be honest.
Well, and I don't know if it'd, it'd be used a whole lot, to be honest, too. I'm not sure what departments would really even use this besides maybe public works, maybe elections, if they're working hard for a week. Yeah, I'm just not sure how many would.
Or if your department runs out of funds to pay overtime, I guess they could do this.
Well, they need to, but that's what a budget's about, right? Is you.
They should have enough padding in the budget.
Yeah, they should be able to say, this is my estimate for the year. And if they, I mean, that happens all the time with UDOT too. You, you don't budget for your snow and it's a big snow season and you just got to get through it.
Or like in the forest office where they're so far behind and they want to get caught up and if they hire people or.
Yeah, sorry, to me, this is nothing with being behind and catching up as much as, here's what happens every year. Every year elections has a week or two weeks where it's a lot of overtime. Every year, roads department has to work extra hours at these seasonal times, so to me, I guess that's what this is speaking to, something that we need to address.
But they've been paying the public for overtime, right?
Yeah, if they, if they qualify for it, yeah. Which really only happens during, you know, snow pile season and it's, even then, it's .
So if they're paying them for it, is it needed?
No, I mean, all this says is, this would be in lieu of payment.
It's an option for you.
If we wanted to.
Gave them an option.
But I guess if, the question is, is it worth the option? Is the tracking going to be a mess? Are we going to have people saying, well, but that comp time was supposed to be at time and a half? You know what I mean? And maybe it's not worth it. Maybe you strike the whole section so we don't have to worry about comp time like that.
So I'm laying it a little bit the other way, just because we've used it for years on the private side, but it's, it is a big benefit for people.
No, I mean on the time and a half specifically.
Sure. And when you include that time and a half portion, you can actually include it in your payroll of, and it'll, they'll track it on the payroll side. It should be tracked fairly easily, I believe, but.
It's just another pay code that we'll need to come over and.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be working with Cassell tomorrow on that too, and that's something I can ask them how it can be done.
Then I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is, I guess.
So I'm reading nine as applying to the backside of the equation, the one and a half. If I'm just reading this section together, is that what we mean? Or do we, are we willing to let them have ten working days that turns into fifteen working days of comp time? Or?
I think it'd be accumulated.
So I'm reading it as the eighty hours?
Mm-hmm.
Because the map, the compensatory time under seven C accrues at one and a half hours, and so it's accruing, so maybe you're only working overtime. Would that be six days, but now you've got eight days off?
Yeah, so we're reading it the same way. I just want to make sure that's what the intent is at the, from the commission. We're, so, so they don't get to take, work ten days of overtime, ten days of.
And get fifteen.
Yeah, they, they get.
An awful lot of overtime.
Yeah. And get fifteen, they, they work.
Eight, seven.
Seven and a half and get ten.
Yeah. I agree with the, the way it's currently good.
Okay.
A total of eighty hours of two weeks, five hours, or ten workdays.
Is the maximum amount of compensatory time.
Whatever.
I just don't think this is going to really relate to a whole lot of people.
It's probably not.
We have forty full-time people, this is going to be maybe three or four people.
What do we do in the case of comp time if the employee leaves and they've got, say, eighty hours? Are we paying that out?
That's the thing.
I think you have to.
You do have to. I agree with that.
Actually, you don't.
And what about, I know, maybe this isn't in this part.
If it's, if it's hours worked, I, I think you have to, but.
Well, when I left the post office, or before I left the post office, I had to use up all of my time, comp time, before I left. So I had to use.
So they didn't, so they didn't have to pay out. That's why they said, did that, so they didn't have to pay out.
They don't have, they do that. And so I think we need to make sure that if somebody's going to quit, get fired, whatever it might be, or leave, they need to have that comp time taken care of before they leave. If they take vacation for the last week, so be.
Yeah, I mean, that's effectively what happens, right? You leave and they continue to pay you until your comp time's over.
Right, right. Or maybe they have to work it on their last day.
You do have to pay for hours.
If I go in the last day, prove that I was still there. And then I retire.
Does this discuss the maximum amount of, like, vacation and sick leave?
That'd be another part of the policy.
So, back on that nine, it says ten days maximum. Are we, and this is something we had with the post office too, is you had so many, had so much time to use it. I had twelve weeks. And the manager had to give me twelve weeks. They had to be able to accommodate my compensation, compensated time within that twelve weeks. If they didn't, then they could, they had the option to go and, uh, let it go out further. But by policy, it was twelve weeks and that was it. So if you didn't use it, you lose it. You lose it. You lost it.
Well, this is, this is saying you can't go over eighty at any one time. So what you're saying is if they do go over eighty, and I think the next sentence says it has to be approved.
Right.
But I think he's saying that eighty hours had to, would have to be used within a certain period of time.
A certain amount of time.
So they could just hold on to it for.
Yeah, they could hold on to it for two or three years, the way it's written now. And I don't think that's right either. The, the purpose is, is you're working an extra time. This is, they always told us, you're working extra time now, but we want you to have some time off. Just like you guys have told me, I need to take time off. So that's what you, that's what we need to make sure that they still need to take some time off.
So this, and this doesn't have a set twelve week period, it just says a reasonable time.
Does it say a reasonable time?
Eight. Says they have to use it within a reasonable time and the department has to allow it within a reasonable time.
But what's reasonable?
Should we put within a reasonable time not to exceed six months?
That's what I was saying.
A year, a year. It's got to be a year. It can't just be six months.
But why, why would it have to? Twelve weeks is not anywhere near.
It all depend, it all depends on why you're taking that extra time and if you're a full-time employee or not and if you have the time to take the time off. So there's a lot of, and this is what I've seen over the years, but there's just a lot of things that play into it. We actually, on the private side, we, we roll it over. We just say you can't go over eighty, but you can definitely roll it over. If you've worked those hours and we're asking you to work those hours, I don't think this is going to pertain to more than three or four people.
Right.
And I don't think we're going to break the bank on it. I don't think we're going to say you have to work all these extra hours. I just don't think we're going to see that a whole lot, but.
So you say not to exceed one year.
Yeah, that's what I would say, not to exceed a year.
Okay, and so if they accumulate it, it's basically from that time when they've accumulated it one year out. That's why I'm saying you don't necessarily need that a year out. You might need, because if they earn it one full day in a two-week period of time, they have so much time to take that time off. Now, in two months, they earn another day. But yet, if they didn't take that time off, now they've got two of them put together, or two full days, whatever it is. You don't want to stretch that out for another year from the last day because then that first ones are, you know, you can't have a year from the first time or a year from the second time. It's got to be from.
I think if you said not to exceed twelve months, then it's going to, each period earned is going to have its twelve-month period. But you can accumulate your first three in the year and take them all at once.
Right, yeah, I'm just.
I still think we're going to run into it.
Well, I know when it gets bigger in this county, it's going to be a problem.
Well, where the problem lies is where we can't get employees. So if we have guys that are working extra hours and we need them to work those extra hours, that's where we're going to run into.
Right.
So we're actually.
Helping us.
We're begging for them instead of the opposite. We're not saying that.
I just want to let you know that that's what has happened. You've worked in the private, I've worked in the private also, besides government. And so that's what it were.
You've worked in a lot of places.
I have worked in a lot of places, in thirty-two years in one, twenty-eight in the other. And ten in the others, so.
Sending you emails on Sunday morning, so it's not, it's not a very good time.
Okay, so basically, there. Okay, that's what, that's what they were saying.
Thank you.
Somewhere within nine.
These are good.
Or eight.
Ready.
Okay, though, I've exhausted my changes other than, we already talked about updating the signature document.
The only thing is, is we've got to make sure that the.
Must have been around parts of us that have been not.
Are taking notice of it or keeping track of it, which it says in here. It does say it in here, so we just have to make sure we do that.
Yeah, you're right. This could be a good topic to bring up in our Monday meeting, multiple department heads. Which, let's see, next one, I think is.
Do you want me to thoroughly read through this or just glance over it?
I think the explanation is what I was most interested in having a look through that. It's written red for one percent.
You know my point, right?
Uh-huh.
I'll have to read it for one percent.
I think I know where you're at on that. I assume I know where you're at. And maybe, I just wanted to get some thought before we proceed with it.
Okay.
I'll have Julie send that out to the full commission and then through email, we can correspond on it.
Did you guys happen to notice when we were paying for it, it was put in the packet for twenty, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, did you guys see it?
Yes. Yeah, I was wondering why that was in there.
It should have been. It was a document that Leslie sent to me so that I would know how to put in the action stuff.
Can we, I got it.
So it was my fault that I added it to the packet, so, sorry about that.
We'll take just a couple-minute break before our meeting begins.
Just a department move?
Yeah, this is. Okay, I'll have Julie email this out too, so make it available.
Okay.
I don't love this coming in meetings. Feel like it's the appropriate place.
How was our last meeting? It was a pretty light.
I can't remember, that's too long.
Now let me refresh your memory. Kristi Johnson. Oscar Delmonte. Actually, went pretty quickly. I can't believe only one garbage company submitted a bid for the RFP. Oh, you didn't have any public hearings or anything? I must have been short.
When you talked about the last one.
Those are accidents, which is actually.
Nice.
There.
Okay, so this is for the whole county.
Well. You're going to miss them all off?
Mm-hmm.
The one, the one. This is just traffic stops. And then I have to have, they keep one for a while. There's a line, and it just kind of shows you, and that's just the kind of.
I actually wish I didn't.
So, okay, so if we could, if we can also, we can, I mean, I have. We can say that in terms of accidents with injuries, they do occur in that section of road, but not necessarily at a greater rate than in the county general.
That's two years.
Yeah.
That's two years.
Nine. Over the course of two years. And then, for those who say we don't patrol or give people tickets on that section of the road. It's a lot of stops. And that doesn't, and that doesn't include the highway patrol who also stop people on that road.
Well, these will be, these will be fifty-one, fifty. They would be higher patrol, but we respond to. Their calls, you can see local county area, they usually see local county. Well, no, she just did ours. Yeah, these are just ours there.
So it doesn't include any stops they would.
Well, these are the stops.
Those are the traffic stops.
And these are just the county.
Maybe trappers, but the highlighted ones, as you can see, those are the addresses that were impacted. Trappers from my post two is the bottom, the trappers from the.
It was interesting, I, the traffic data. We tend to leave the county faster than we enter. And, and, and look, if I'm leaving at five in the morning, I have less of a concern about, one, getting a ticket, and two, that I'm going to engage with traffic. And it's a straight road, you know?
Did you share with everybody else that?
I haven't.
It's a, you have, don't put, it's, you know, telling you the time, doing the correction.
Some bozo left at a hundred and eighteen thousand.
I've got it, I've got it, yeah. Yeah, I'll ship it.
At two in the morning.
Now, if I had a kid sitting in the back of the car and I was headed to the hospital, I might do a hundred and eighteen at two in the morning.
Yeah, I've got it.
True.
He never looked at the situation.
Okay.
Okay, welcome to the Morgan County Commission meeting, July fifth, twenty twenty-two. We just completed a work session discussing county policies and procedures. Appreciate those who are participating in that discussion. We will begin with an invocation or moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance, and I'd ask Commissioner Wilson to take care of that.
Hail to the Father in Heaven, we bow our heads this evening and give thanks for our blessings of living in this beautiful community. We're grateful for the residents that are here and, and things that they do to help our community. We pray that they'll watch over them and bless them and their families and, and we are grateful, Heavenly Father, for our freedoms. We ask you to bless our local and federal government, that they can make good choices. Pray for the family of the little girl in Kaysville that was killed yesterday. Ask you to bless and watch over them. Thankful, Father in Heaven, for the things that we enjoy and we pray that we can not have any fires this year and, and that people will make good decisions in the way that they, they do the things here in our community so that we can protect our community. We pray for thy blessings to be here with us this evening. Ask thee, Heavenly Father, that we can take care of the county business in a way pleasing unto thee and, and to our community. And we say these things in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will move to the consent items. We have one item that is approval of the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Are there any adjustments that need to be made to those minutes?
I did receive adjustments to be made from Commissioner Fekru and Garrett, I think Garrett Smith. So I've already done those, and then if there's any more, I'll get those done.
Any comments?
Oh, sorry. I did have. I would have scanned these to you, but I was, I didn't have a scanner when I was reading through them. And I came in this morning to my office and my whole printer was gone, so. I was too lazy to walk through the June twenty-first minutes.
I did notice, um, bottom of page three of the minutes. It notes Commissioner Anderson moved that we continue working with the policy. Anderson is spelled incorrectly there. Should be S E N.
It's spelled incorrectly in a lot of places. I've just never mentioned it. I've been used to it all my life.
I've just spelled it like this for seven months.
Not a big deal. E N, Danish.
He was a sin. Not a son of Ander.
Eight as well. Commissioner Anderson.
Looks like.
So, five o'clock, A, opening ceremonies, did you get? The chair's, last name needs to be capitalized.
Where was this, I'm sorry?
Opening ceremonies, pledge of allegiance.
Did you say five?
It was, sorry, that was the time. Opening ceremonies, number three, pledge of allegiance, Chair Newton. His name needs to be capitalized. See that?
Oh, I think I already just told that one.
Okay.
Yes.
In item number two, on the top of page three, commission following the counties. That should just be possessive, C O U N T Y. Okay, you got that already? Same for in the motion, county's legal counsel, should be possessive, not plural. And I think the name of the agreement, Morgan Solid Waste Administration, is it joint board?
I couldn't understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I think it's joint, not joined.
It's a joint board between Morgan City and Morgan County.
Item eight. It's the description, Chair Newton stated that hundred thousand was appropriated to the mountain green, capital G.
Oh, yeah. And was the amount correct?
Yes, but we actually had a put was previously appropriated.
Yeah.
But were you doing a total of four hundred thousand then? Or?
Four hundred. Well, total was four hundred, but we'd already done the one hundred, so it was three hundred.
Three hundred additional.
And then you, and the commission is contemplating giving two hundred thousand more to the sewer district, just go ahead and spell it out, you spell it out above, so. Those were mine.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Newton's are the only ones that don't need to fix the rest of the stuff.
Excellent. Okay, do we have a motion on the consent items? That is approval of the June 21st, 2022 meeting minutes.
Move that we approve the June 21st, 2022 meeting minutes with all the corrections? Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the June 21st, 2022 meeting minutes as amended this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Commissioner McConnell. We will now move to Commissioner's declaration of conflict of interest, any conflicts with any items on this evening's agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will move to the public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission. We will ask that you please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes maximum. We do not have, oh, sorry, we do have one public hearing on the agenda, will be item G, so if you're here to discuss that item, there will be opportunity for a public hearing on that. But that will open it to public comment.
Well, Leah Allen, I just want to speak to the Northside Park and the development agreement. I went ahead and, I've been writing on the bike trail that was agreed upon, and, so being in the meetings, I kind of remembered a bit about it, so I went back to the development agreement, and I just wanted you guys to be aware that they built the bike trail, bike lane, to the roundabout only. As I read on the, and they finished their, like, entrance, they beautified the side, and so it doesn't look like they're gonna go any further. But as I read on that development agreement, it talks about that the bike lane needs to go from Cottonwood Phase Four and back down around Toilla Creek. So they've kind of only done, I guess, half, up to the roundabout, and then it does talk about road improvements, and there, again, to the roundabout, it is really a nice road. The bike lane is really nice, by the way. It's being used a ton, lots of walkers and bikers, but the road, the asphalt stops also at the roundabout, and it was very specific about bettering the roundabout, but then it stops and it turns to gravel. It's like, it's road base, I guess, maybe that's what it's called, I don't know. And I think they are doing some roadwork up on top, so maybe, maybe that's coming down the line, I don't know. And there was one other thing in the development agreement. I know it does, I can't remember what, I don't have an issue, but it did talk about signage, that there's supposed to be some signage that there's not, but I think that's all that I can remember. Anyway, I just wanted to bring those to your attention, and I would hope that the. Was that the signage for the airport? Was that what it was? Signage hanging on the? Well, you know, in the development agreement, it, I didn't see that it said. I guess I'm not supposed to be asking questions. Yeah, don't screw it. Yeah, that they were supposed to install up to ten signs approved by the county attorney, so I'm sure Garrett knows the specific sign language there, but. Anyway, I really would like to see the bike lanes there, and, but it looks like they have finished the, you know, they've got the curb and getter in and that kind of thing from the roundabout up to their access point, so it looks complete, as far as that goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. I know you're working on the packets and all that, getting them in the right order, but if you look at the packet for today, unless you guys have items in your emails that aren't, that support the items that are on the agenda, there's nothing in the packet for anyone to look at and know what you're discussing on several of the items. I particularly wanted to know about item number five, because you postponed that one to work on the conditions, and when I read through it, the packet has the, is this exact same packet of conditions that you had at the last meeting where you were making changes to those conditions, and my community was really concerned about what those conditions would be, and all we, all that is in the packet for today is the same ones that were in the last packet. So that was really concerning to me. And you do have an ordinance that says for somebody to submit an item, whether it's a commissioner or a public member, that they have to have backup documents for each item. It's spelled out on the wall, and it's spelled out in your ordinance, so I'd hope to start seeing some more of those as, as we're going forward, and I don't mean to be critical, I know exactly what you're going through. I, I just had hoped to read the packet this morning and get some information, and didn't. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and thank those who participated. We will move to presentation. Our county recorder, Brenda Nelson, regarding Monument Replacement and Restoration Grant.
Hello, I just want to bring you guys to your attention that Morgan County submitted for a grant for forty thousand dollars for the preservation. Last year we only got about fourteen, but this is a one time to be able to get more than we usually do because of the monies that was allotted to the ARGC, and we were able to obtain all the funding that we requested, all forty thousand dollars. It's non-matching, and so this will come from the state through the ARGC, and we will be, it runs through the middle of 2023, and we will be collecting twenty to thirty corners as the surveyor goes out there and establishes some corners for Morgan County. And this isn't a tax, this isn't burden to the taxpayers here in Morgan County, and it's very necessary to get the corners in, in the proper positions for developments, and anybody do a survey, and so we appreciate the years that we've been able to get the funding through submitting for grants that we don't have to match with.
It's wonderful, thank you, Brenda.
Thanks.
We appreciate your diligence in working on those grants as they become available, and are excited about the opportunity. Forty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and will go a long ways towards re-establishing those corners, so thank you.
So how many, how many is that gonna do for us?
Twenty to thirty corners.
Twenty to thirty, okay.
Yeah, when you're looking at corners, you're looking at the northwest, southwest, southeast, southwest, southeast and southwest, and hopefully we can find some of the east and west corners as well, in those sections that we're looking at.
Okay.
Our main ones we're looking at is the growth areas that were, and moving in the vicinity in those areas that growth is coming.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate you coming in to share that with us. We love to hear that there's money flowing into the county that's not out of taxpayer pockets, so, thank you. Or at least not local property taxpayer pockets. Okay, let's move to our action items. First item on the agenda, Mr. John Cannon and Mr. Brett Heiner, discussion and decision on request for six thousand dollars for fair rodeo expenses.
Unfortunately, I've been roped into handling the rodeo again this year, but I guarantee this will be my last year, so I won't be back next year. We're.
We might make that a condition of approval. Be careful what you say, John.
Anyway, last year the county supported the rodeo with some additional funds that we use for marketing the rodeo, going after local participants to participate in the rodeo, and other, other items that, you know, enhance the rodeo, and so we'd like to, we'd like to do the same, we're requesting to do the same thing this year that we did last year. The six thousand dollars will go to producing a little bit better rodeo. This year we have, we're gonna spend about seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars on video production during the rodeo. We've got most of that sponsored by private sources. We wanna encourage the local people to participate again and pay some entry fees, and, and then there was a few items Brett that you had that.
Yeah, just some local events that we, you was there last year, that just helps fund those local events, like the wild cow milking, those kind of events.
We'd like to use that money to pay the entry fee for any councilman that'd like to participate in the wild cow milking.
Yeah. Well, fortunately for us, we're not council members, so you know, we're off the hook.
Commissioner Fackel would like to ride a bull.
Nope. I'll tell you, the other day I tried to do the potato sack race, I made two jumps and I was flat.
Well, we could help you with that.
So I'll try to milk it if you'll hold it.
We could, we could hold, you could milk.
Okay. I'm not gonna take, I'm not gonna do a bull, I'll take a cow.
So anyway, that's, basically, we're trying to accomplish the same thing. I think, I think the rodeo last year was very successful, we brought a lot of people into the community. We've, we've gone a little further this year to try to make it just a little bit better with things like reserved seating and some more marketing, and, and really try to bring some out of, out of town people into our community to spend their money for that event. And hopefully, my goal, my goal is to double the revenue that we had last year, and I don't know if we're gonna get there, but I think it's possible, so I think that'd be a good thing.
And that'll help us pay for the parachute jumpers and the flyover, and give them a little bit of fuel to do that for us. That's just some of the things that we used the money for last year, seemed to be a pretty good crowd because of, I think it'd be even better, or trying for better.
Yeah, last year was the first time we ever sold out. Had to stop selling tickets.
I think some of these events helped it. And so I think it'll get even better.
Had lots of positive comments from the community.
Does this come out of the fund balance, or is this part of what we advance, and they cover their own expenses?
Yeah, it's kind of.
So it's basically an addition, I mean, if they bring in revenue, or when they bring it in, it will come out of that, not out of the non-departmental, is that correct?
No, it would come out of the fund balance.
Fund balance.
Until the revenues come in?
No.
It's a donation to the fair.
It's a donation to the fair.
Yeah.
It would be a portion of the county would spend towards the fair.
It helps them when they go to build a pavilion and things like that. That's what it would go towards if it's in the profits.
The revenue that comes from the fair, we divert into the, or we move into the Fairground Improvement Fund at the end of the year, which we did this last time, and that's what's paying for the pavilion that will be built.
We did make more money last year, and that's what's really helping, like Commissioner Newton's saying, that we've, we are building a pavilion this year, which is taking a lot of that extra money that we did make, but that's, be a great improvement on the fair.
And if we can double, you know, if we can double the revenue this year, how, how we're gonna try to do that is, we've, Brett and I've gone through, and we've created some reserved seating, and we're, and we're discharging more money for a reserved seat, and we think that'll, we think that's gonna go over pretty well, and, and that'll help us with extra ticket revenue for the rodeo.
There's a lot of seat reservation that goes on informally.
Yes. Duck tape and blankets.
Yeah.
And I'll put a plug in for the, the fair and rodeo, just for the members of the public, those tickets are on sale now, so you can go buy your rodeo tickets today if you'd like, both reserved and non-reserved.
Through the fair website.
Through the fair website, correct.
And after tonight, I imagine, once they hear Blaine will be participating, I imagine it will be sold out, so get your tickets early, you may wanna sign up right now for your tickets, so.
We had a commissioner volunteer to get around over Friday, I guarantee you Saturday you'd sell out.
And with that, with that money, if you, if you'll agree to, to support that, we will guarantee one of the fly girls will fall off their horse. We can't guarantee which night, but we guarantee at least one ride.
I don't, I don't want that to happen, there's too much danger in it.
Okay, any questions?
The question is, is are you gonna continue if we do this?
If you will.
And you're gonna quit squawking about property taxes?
Well, I, I always, I'm always very concerned about what we charge our citizens in property tax.
Okay, so this is coming out of your property taxes?
Especially our older citizens, so.
And I asked from one of them, I'm one of them.
We're, well, what we're hoping to do, we're hoping that, the goal of putting events on like this is not only to support the, our local community, but it's to bring people in here, when they come to a rodeo, we tip them upside down, shake all the money out of their bits, and send them home, and so that's really the goal, so, so hopefully events like this can, can help us generate sales tax income, so we can eventually reduce the property tax.
That's right.
But we'll leave that for you, the big decisions.
Really appreciate all that you do, John.
All the work, John and Brett, the work that you guys put into this. If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion, make a motion that we approve the amount of six thousand dollars for fair rodeo expenses, coming out of the general fund.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the disbursement of six thousand dollars from the general fund balance to fair rodeo expenses. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate.
Thank you.
All that you do, and the fair board in general, been working very hard, they're meeting regularly to get things going here. Okay, Mr. Heiner, you get to stay in the hot seat.
I got something by myself, huh?
Item number two is discussion decision, proposed purchase of fencing and trailers.
Let's talk about the transport first. I sent the bids over to Commissioner Wilson, we didn't get it on for you guys to see, do you want me to pass these around?
Yeah.
So we are in need of a transport. Yep, I've got one. And the reason is, is ours is really not adequate, all the dozer to fight fires. It's, it's in tough shape, I mean, we are using. It's, it's in tough shape, I mean, we are using it, it does work, but it's not the safest piece of equipment that we have. And the only reason I'm pursuing it now, 'cause I have a way to pay for it. I wouldn't really pursue anything like this, and we have a way to pay for it. But, to give you an example, our, our transport, the max you can, you can pack on is about 40,000 pounds, and the dozer weighs just a little over that. If you look at this one, Commissioners, this one's 60,000 pound capacity, which, a little bit longer, a little bit wider, a little bit bigger, be quite a bit safer. And if, if you really want, you can follow us dragging it, and then you'd be able to, and then you'd have more of opinion like, like I have of, of our transport. And that price that I give you there is on state contract, just like the tenewiers that we bought, they're on state contract, which you, which the state's already done the, the process to get the, to get, to get the best price, not only in the state, but in the intermountain west. That price right there beats any other price by at least $10,000 if we just went to any other place to buy one. So there's no need to bring those other, those other bids in on a transport. That's what's nice about being on state contract, we do a few things on state contract, like we bought our trucks, salt, those kind of things are pretty convenient for us, the state does a lot of that work for us, so, that's why there's only one price.
Why would we pay $2,000 to bring it from Salt Lake to here?
Is that on there?
There's a freight charge on there.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
Would we just go down and get it?
We'd just go down and get it, yeah. When it comes in, it'll, it'll be to Salt Lake, so I'd be, I didn't notice that, but that's, we wouldn't do that. That's probably something they put on just for the intermountain area, I would think.
And then, what about the old one, are we, are they giving us some money for it?
No, we, we'd be better just to put it up for sale, in my opinion. We'd be able to sell it. What we'd get, I haven't really pursued that too much, I'm guessing we would get 10 to 15 out of it, so we could put that back in the fund. So you, you would eventually take that off that price.
Do you wanna tell them where the money's coming from?
Yeah, so the reason we have some funds that we can use is from our insurance. Now remember both our disasters that we had, the windstorm and the road shop on fire, me and my guys did a lot of that work ourself to bring that building back up, and especially the salt shed, we saved quite a bit of money there. So I've got some money in that account that we can use for something like this, and I think that's a great, a great way to use the money, to get the equipment that we need, so, so we don't need it out of the general fund, we don't even need it out of capital improvements, this is out of the insurance fund.
So why is there no spare tire?
What's that?
No spare wheel. That's what it says here.
We'll probably buy one for him. On that price, they, he just didn't...
At that price, they had to throw in one.
He just didn't include it on there.
Hey, you've got two places here, it says no spare wheel and no spare tire.
And that type of...
But then you do have mud flaps.
Yeah, you should have them. The spare tire on those, you just keep them in the shop, and throw them in the truck when you need to.
You have fencing listed on here, is there more discussion on that? Do we wanna finish this discussion and then do that?
Yeah, a separate fund, we'll take that out if we do.
Any additional questions?
I don't have any.
Sir, is there an account with the insurance proceeds?
There is an account, but I don't know the number.
Yeah, I don't know which one it is.
Do you know the number by chance, Brett, the account number for the insurance?
No, I've got it on my desk, but I can tell you how much is in there, close.
We just need it for the motion.
Okay, I, I can get it to you.
Document, so they can, they can write it in there every time.
Do you need the expense account number for the lady?
That's what you're asking for. I'm sure we can...
I've got it in my office, but I don't have it with me.
I guess the only other thing I'd, I just wanted to make sure trade discount didn't make, that was what they were giving us for our trade.
No, there wasn't.
That's just a discount for government?
Yeah. Yeah, they haven't even looked at ours, I mean, I could trade it in, but we need to get one in before we, you know what I mean, I need to get one here and then...
Why are we jumping from 40 to 60, or is it...
Just so we, really so we can haul the Traco and dozer. The Traco weighs about that, and the dozer weighs a little over that. So that, that transport's not the biggest transport, it's not real big for what, you know, compared to, like the state has a transport, but it's, it's a 60, it's quite a bit longer and heavier. It's bent, actually, if you, if you look at it, it's bent, because it's been overloaded. It was like that before I came.
I can just share it with... I was just trying to see if I could find the number, but I don't, yeah.
We get the fire season, we load the dozer and have it on a truck, fueled up and ready to go. This number, I don't even know. It's 600, it'll be the, there's 10 dash right here, huh? Okay, you want the number?
Yeah.
10 dash 3340 dash 600 dash 100.
Okay, repeat that again. 10 dash 3340 dash 600?
Dash 100.
Dash 100, okay.
Do we have a motion on the side?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the road department's acquisition of a TKT 60 LP tilt trailer with 60,000 pounds capacity, with funding to come from account 10 dash 3340 dash 600 dash 100.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve purchase of the transport trailer, the amount of $48,890, correct?
That's correct, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Comment?
Yes.
You said 48,000, I thought it would be 2,000 less than that.
Oh yeah, probably will be.
Matt, it'll be in, in August.
Uh, well, we'll see.
We'll have...
That freight, that freight may be freight to, for them to get it to their dealership, maybe not to us.
I know they're not charging us 2,000.
So we'll go the 48,890, and if it's less, because you pick it up, great.
Either way. It's on order, it's coming in, it's a wheeler order.
Okay.
And, and then we will have the sale of it through Matt's UAC thing, public surplus property, the old one?
Yeah, we'll, we'll advertise the old one when we get ready. Probably since, after we get the new one set up. So that'll help some.
Okay, let's talk about the fencing item you had, Brett.
Okay, the fencing item is chain link fence, we do have some over the road, over the public worship building, the road shop. We have some that goes around the back, comes around each corner. I would like to fence it with gates to be more secure, if we could, I mean, it, it's actually nice the way it is now, 'cause you can come in easier really, but I think it'd be a good idea, but the kind of equipment we have, you know, we try to put everything inside, but there's not enough room for everything we have, there's not enough bays, not everything fits in there. We have been hit a couple of times in the last couple of months, siphoning fuel. I've got a couple of calls, besides the time we got hit, I got a couple of calls late at night, that, hey, there's somebody over messing around at your place, and, so we come down and check it out, that happens, and that's happened before. But I think now that it's fixed up pretty nice, it's gonna happen even more, so, that's the reason for it, just to be secure. And like I say, the way it is now is really nice, just to come in and out, but not on the weekends if it's midnight, you know?
So what funds will it come out of?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the dollar amount and the...
So, my, my, here's my concern on the thing, and that's why I wanted to be able to decide, I, I mean, I told Brett, I think, I think that fence is needed, but to have four slide gate operators with built-in radio receivers and backup power read and photo eyes and all that stuff, I think that might be a little over the top for Morgan County. I think the guys might be able to get out and move a gate open. It's open all day, I would think, right?
Yeah, we'd have to have slide gates on there, the four gates is actually two gates, because they go like this. It's actually one gate, it's not, it's not...
One opening?
Sure, but I'm, I'm just talking about being able to walk up and put in your code, your whatever, you know?
Yeah, the only difference is we're on the road.
It's 24 grand for convenience.
So they've got to park on the road, go open a gate.
You what?
Let's say we're on, we're on the road instead of down the lane, like the state, let's say, has a spot to pull in off the road, open it, get out of your vehicle, open a gate, and then, but that's why I'd like to have automatic gates. I mean, I, I think we've got enough money to do it.
In which budget?
Where are you reading that off of?
Yeah, see, we don't have any information.
You didn't give, I thought he just handed you guys this.
No.
No, he just, just...
Gave us the trailer.
Just the trailer stuff, we don't have the quote.
So we have enough stuff, you know?
And what was the funding source, Brett?
Capital improvements. And you could take this out of insurance fund too, either one. We've got enough in capital improvements to do it.
Oh, these are the two separate bids.
Yeah. We had to work hard to get two bids.
Um, one question I would have on capital improvement, where are we at on our improvement plan for this facility? So we typically bring in about $100,000 in, in revenue to that capital improvement fund through the tax levy. Last year we spent the vast majority of that on the salt shed, and I'm not opposed to, to spending more on, on that facility, but my question is, is there, should we be spending some money on this facility this year as well?
Well, we have, we put about 40,000 in here, out of that, so far this year, so we have, and, I mean, we could use some of the money out of the insurance fund too, we have quite a bit in there. I mean, the transport's not gonna use it, not close. So, I mean, that, that'd be an idea too, I mean, we, we've got a way to pay for it. I just think it'd finish the facility off nice, it'd be permanent, last long time, gonna save us a problem down the road, probably save us some money on the weekend when, when we could get some damage in there. And I, and we couldn't do it until now, because we had to finish the parking lot, if you know, we, we had to finish paving what we couldn't pave last fall. So when you put this fence in, you, you pave first, and then they go in and corridor the holes for the fence after you pave, so, so it's just been the last couple of months we've been ready, or last month and a half, that we're really ready to think about doing this, couldn't even attempt it until now, so, that's the reason for the timing on it.
I'd like to postpone it myself till I can go over funds better, that's, that's me. If you guys have different feelings, I would just like to... Yeah, I'll make a motion that we postpone it, till we can meet, till I can meet with Kimberly and go over the, the funds, you know?
And I'll second it.
I just wanna, I just wanna verify all that. I know this is gonna be a difficult year with our inflation stuff, inflationary stuff, so I just wanna make sure we're not digging out of our general pot at the end.
And that's fine, we can leave it the way it is, this isn't a must-have, really, I mean, it'd be nice to secure it, but...
So how, how...
If the facility's done except for this, so...
How long do we have to use the insurance money? And have we taken care of all the things that was burned down?
There's still some small things that I'm doing, just because it's hard to get things, I mean, there's, there's a couple of things that I have on order, I have a fuel tank that's coming in to replace our tank, I just, there's a few other items, but most of the big stuff's done. And then we'll find something, I mean, we just didn't go through and just buy everything that burned up, because there's a lot of things that we didn't need, you know? So we're, we're finding small things, that, hey, we, we never bought this, but, you know, not 52,000 dollar things, just small things. And that'll, and that'll continue, I think, for a while. We'll keep buying those small items as we need them. But there's a, there's a lot of items in there that were old, you know, that weren't used anymore, or, or there's, you know, there's a few items in there that we just flat didn't need, so we haven't replaced every little thing.
The, the insurance monies were checks given to you, right? There wasn't a timeframe when they had to be spent, they were literally checks given to you?
No timeframe, it's just our money. And really the money, the extra money came from our labor, and then some of those items that we haven't replaced, you know, they give us, they give us the money for signs that we would never buy, you know, they're obsolete signs that were new, and there was, there were some parts in there, there was, you know, like some cases of oil filters for trucks that were brand new, but we don't have the truck anymore, so, but we still got paid for that kind of stuff, so that's where the money added up. But the majority of it added up doing a lot of labor ourselves, like when the salt shed, we, we saved a lot of money on the salt shed doing all that site work ourselves. So that's probably more than half of that money, the fund is from that.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second to postpone the fence item, pending further discussion on the budget? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you Brett.
You can keep them copies if you wanna get them.
I'll, I'll email them to them, Brett.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you Brett, appreciate it. Aaron Bott, I don't believe she's here, do you wanna cover that one?
Yeah, I can cover in place of her, this is really, uh, let me just open it back up. This is just recommend, recommending Sadie McBride as a new library board trustee, she's just asking for approval for that.
No question on that. I'm pretty sure it's happened in that department, but just curious, we seem to have in the past not interviewed, or whoever had to interview the different applicants, have we done the process this time?
I can check and see, I know with the library board, we beg people.
Yeah, I know.
We do not have people that apply for us, so we've, we do everything we can to try and find somebody, I think this has been open for quite some time.
I don't know, that's why I'm just asking, so that way we don't have a complaint like we did two a month ago, or two weeks ago, where we received an application, we never interviewed anybody.
I would assume that there were multiple applications that would be included here, but perhaps not. It is difficult to get applicants for these volunteer...
Was it posted?
Yeah, that's a great question.
I believe, yeah, she went through the, I believe it was, I don't know if you remember or not.
I had nothing to do with it.
Oh.
She never went to meet, came to me and just posted it.
Yeah, if you're concerned, Blaine, we can make sure, we can check those boxes and see. We've been without them for this long, it's not gonna hurt us, but, so what do you wanna check?
I just say, let's check and make sure that it was posted, that we had a fair opportunity within the county to, to apply for the advisory board, or the library board trustee, and make sure that they interviewed, if they had more than one applicant.
I'd be surprised if she didn't, but I can just...
I know, I'm just asking, you have to make sure. So I move that we postpone this, till we know the answers to those questions.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone, pending confirmation of a couple of items, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving to item number four, Sergeant Corey Stark, discussion decision regarding two new deputy sheriff ones to go to the academy starting August 1st. deputy sheriff ones to go to the academy starting August 1st.
Okay, so technically, everybody knows that we have one that's retiring now, and we have one that's gonna be retiring at the end of the year. In order to stay ahead of our game, we wanna get these new two kids hired, um, the next academy starts in August, which their academy would end in December, so then we can have them out on patrol and start FTO-ing at that time. With one deputy already leaving last week, his, between his wages, he's a 20-year guy, his wages is gonna cover majority of the wages that we're paying these two guys, I think it's over by $3, $3 an hour. But that being said, we have that money in our wage fund due to not hiring people the first year, not till May, so we still have that, that money in that account.
So we're, we would pay for the academy, I assume?
The academy's free to, for the county.
Oh, okay.
All we're doing is paying for their wages.
Uh, while they're in the academy?
While they're in the academy.
How long does an academy last?
August to December.
August to December.
That's a long academy.
And these are people you've already interviewed, I guess?
We've interviewed them and told them their stipulations, we gotta wait to see if we're gonna, you guys will approve.
Do we, do we have some type of a document that they sign that commits them to a time period of...
So, yeah, we're gonna try to get them to, uh, we ran into a problem with this at Weaver County, when I was down at Weaver County, we would sign a document saying we would be there for at least two years. We could have them sign this document, but, and all reality is non-avoided, because you do have the right to fire them, so if you have the right to fire them, they have the right to leave.
Yeah, but if they receive money from, from us, which they are going to be doing...
Say that again?
I say, if they receive money from us, then they are obligated. I had one, just a scholarship, but I had to work in a, in a rural school for a period of time in that field.
You're paying them, you're paying them a wage for a job that they're gonna be doing, so it's just same as...
But we're not paying, I don't get it then.
We're not paying for the school.
The job is them going to school, it's their time while they go to school.
So we're just compensating them while they're in the academy.
We're not paying for their schooling.
Well, I think they should have at least a, a year that they have to stand there.
I'd like to have them sign a two-year contract, but like I said, I think you can have them sign that, but, uh, we'd have to talk to Garrett here, I'm unsure if we'd actually be able to stick them to that.
Can you, Garrett?
So I'm...
The will's a term.
I thought that there was, 'cause we have done a similar contract for a cost agreement, where the cost to attend, is it, is it for post? Is it that academy? So we have done one for the county where there was a...
We have them currently, right now, that has signed a contract, which is, we'll have them sign that, I just don't know if we can actually stick it to them.
And, but, you know, the cost of the training, $10,000, if they leave, um, let's see, if they leave on or before completion of the first year, they'll pay back the total amount of costs. If they leave on or before completion of two years, they pay back two-thirds, third year, they pay back one-third, and then after that...
And is it legally binding? It's legally okay to...
It's a cost agreement that's been used in other jurisdictions, and, and so...
Great.
We already have any...
So I think if we, you know, move forward in this direction, we can have them follow the same cost agreement.
Sure. And have you talked to them about that?
Yeah, we, I already mentioned to both of them that we have them, have signed a contract. Uh, we have one in the academy right now that has signed that contract, and everybody's willing to, just...
Yeah.
And I think the contract actually states, if they leave law enforcement, they don't have to pay it back, but if they leave to go to another agency or office, they have to pay it back.
Makes sense.
That does make sense.
They can't get hired away by somebody trying to, let's put them through and then steal them.
'Cause the highway department does it, I mean, not the highway, state highway.
'Cause after the academy, you might not wanna go into law enforcement.
That's right.
Yeah, so it says, after deputy has completed three years of employment with Morgan County Sheriff's Office, or in the, in the event of death or total disability, deputy shall have no obligation to pay the county back.
I'm okay with that one.
I'm excited that we've got folks who are interested in law enforcement, I think it's...
You're starting to see it turn back the other direction.
That's wonderful.
We actually have a pretty good opportunity, we got some really good experience out here right now, with guys that have expert, expert experience in certain areas, so new guys coming in here and they learn that, that's a big hit on their end.
That's great.
So I have a question. In the hiring process that you've already hired or done, was the HR involved in, at all in hiring this? Okay, I just wanna make sure, okay? I'm fine.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, we'll look for a motion. And again, the item here is, is paying the two deputies who will be going through post for their time as they attend the, the training, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So who's paying for the post itself?
The state offers that to the counties, to put people through their academies. Now, people can self-sponsor and put themselves through that, and then, of course, it's gonna cost them money, but as a county, we...
So the county's paying it?
No. The state offers that to the counties.
All right, sounds good.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of two new deputy sheriffs to go to the post academy, starting on August 1st, 2022, with the funds for compensation to come from the sheriff's employment and wages line items.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the two deputy sheriffs to be hired and to go through the academy, starting August 1st. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, and thank you to the Sheriff's Department for all you do.
All right, thank you.
May I ask you one more question along that?
Yeah.
How many total deputies will you have in your department at that point?
14.
14 at that point?
At that point.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Item number five, Mr. John Redd and Ryan Brown, discussion decision, conditional use permit for drug and alcohol residential treatment facility.
I can probably take the lead on this, if, if you'd like, but the applicant's welcome to speak as well. I've been in contact with the applicant's attorney, I did forward an email to you about four o'clock today, um, of their final red line, going back and forth, so I hope you had a chance to read through that. I, um, I'll let the applicant speak to the discussions they've had with their attorney and whether they approve it as is. I have printed a copy, based on that final red line, um, and if, if they approve it, which is kinda awkward since they're represented, I can't speak with them directly about this without their attorney, but, um, through the meeting, if, if it all looks good, I can pass them a copy, they can sign it, and then I can, um, return it back to you as well. But this is just a follow-up of prior meetings that we've had, and, um, satisfying some of the concerns on, on the party's side of defining terms more clearly, so that the applicants aren't held to a standard that's not clearly defined, and that the county understands, um, what, what they're intending to do as well. So if you have any questions for me or, or the applicant, can speak as well?
Commissioner, is there any questions on the red line copy that you have? And I think it may be beneficial, just for the benefit of the public, if we go through and read those conditions.
Okay.
I know that was a question brought up earlier, was what are those conditions that we've listed in the, the agreement?
This is, it's very similar also to what I sent out, um, two and a half weeks ago or so, to the commission, we just hadn't had the, you know, the full, the finalization until today. This is under Article II, conditions of the CUP for the RTC. Uh, CUP is defined above as a conditional use permit, and the RTC is defined above as the residential treatment center. So as the conditions listed below have been imposed by the county pursuant to Morgan County Code 8-9-5 and Utah County Code 17-27A-506, and have been agreed to by the parties. Uh, the first condition, that the RTC obtain all state required permits from the Utah Department...
Garrett, was that Utah State Code, or you, you said Utah County?
Um, so I meant to say County Code 8-9-5, and then Utah Code.
Okay.
So there, it does comply with both our code and, and the county code, as far as our code is superseded by, by Utah Fair Housing. Okay, that the RTC obtain all state required permits from the Utah Department of Human Services, required for the use permitted pursuant to the CUP at the property prior to operation. That six off-street parking spaces are provided for the staff and any visitors to the RTC. That no more than eight RTC residents will be housed and treated at any time at the RTC under the current Morgan County Code. However, if Morgan County Code is amended, the RTC shall be permitted additional RTC residents, so long as the number of RTC residents complies with the amended code and the Utah Department of Human Services residential treatment rules and regulations. This would just allow the applicant to submit a code amendment, and if there is an approval by the commission to, um, to enlarge, or, you know, to...
Increase it.
Increase, then they wouldn't have to apply for a new CUP after that. Uh, the next one, that 24-hour supervision is provided to all RTC residents while they are physically located within Morgan County. That was one of the changes that was recently made, just narrowing it to Morgan County, 'cause they may do trips outside of the county, and, and then it wouldn't be under Morgan County jurisdiction at that point. That the RTC will comply with all fire code requirements for a residential facility per the Mountain Green Fire Protection District. That the RTC is not a Justice Reinvestment Initiative certified facility. That no registered sex offenders be housed at the RTC. That no violent offenders be housed at the RTC. I'm gonna jump ahead to the next section that defines violent offender for purposes of this agreement. It's a person who either has been convicted of, um, an offense during the course of which the person carried, possessed, or used a firearm, or other dangerous weapon, or there occurred the use of force against the person of another, or there occurred the death of, or serious bodily injury to any person without regard to whether proof of any of the elements described here is required to convict, or has previously been convicted of a felony crime of violence involving the use or attempted use of force against a person with the intent to cause death or serious bodily harm. Okay, and then the next condition is that the RTC will be restricted from housing any person with current illegal use of addiction to, or addiction to, any federally controlled substance, as defined in Section 102 of the Controlled Substances Act, which is 21 U.S. Code, Section 802, and further detailed in 21 U.S. Code, Section 812. This restriction is pursuant to the Utah Fair Housing Act, 57-21-2, subsection 10B, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act, which is 42 U.S. Code, 3602, subsection H. And those are the conditions.
Okay, any questions from the commission regarding the conditions?
So with the changes proposed by your legal counsel this afternoon, are you comfortable with the form of the agreement?
Yeah, there's one change that I just need to ask counsel about, but I can make a phone call.
A change that your counsel made?
Yeah, well, I just wanna see if he got that change in there, um, in the document. We, it'd been going back and forth over the last couple of days.
Do you wanna come see?
There were, there were two changes.
There were two changes he discussed? Is it this one, here at the end? Just barely, he said we hadn't talked about them. It's been removed. Here, I'll show you his red line.
Yeah, and then only, um, the only other thing I'm discussing is 2.1.3. I just did one else, this to simply preclude us from being able to file a reasonable accommodation at some other point, and we decided once we can make a case, we can check it as a precedent to that.
And you might wanna speak into the mic too, but you can, yeah, you can take this with you, and as you're looking at it.
Because I, I didn't know which, we had a couple forms back and forth, and so the other one that is 2.1.3, um, we understand no more than eight, we just don't want by bringing to this and the CUP for it to preclude, preclude us, um, from asking for a reasonable combination for more than it, um, at some point in the future. And he was, we asked him to put that into it as well.
So that wasn't communicated through counsel to me?
Okay, are you getting with him right now?
So 2.1.3 says that you're limited to eight.
Correct.
However, if the county code is amended, says the RTC shall be permitted additional RTC residents, so long as the number of RTC residents complies with the amended code and the Utah Department of Human Services residential treatment rules and regulations.
Correct, but if the code is not amended, um, would like to just make sure that this doesn't preclude us from asking for a reasonable accommodation in the future.
I don't read it as precluding you from doing that, but I don't think our code presently permits it, an approval, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you could ask for it, but unless the code is amended, I don't think you could get any, anything else.
So it's just a, there's a process to follow to get to the request, I guess, is the way I would say it.
What does...
And the waiver, maybe I can get to that, 'cause that was something that was new, that I did put in the email, are there any questions on, on the removal of that waiver?
Yeah, all, all of this I've read through, okay, lock. Okay, so do you want this?
No, the, the waiver wasn't intended to address a fair housing claim.
Okay.
It was intended to address land use claims that the legal counsel was asserting, but I don't have a problem with the changes proposed today.
Okay. So that has been removed, and you can confirm that with, with Gavin?
So is that the only area that you're concerned about with this agreement?
Sorry, sir?
I say, is that the only area you are concerned about of this agreement?
Yeah, we, we can agree to the other aspects of it. To the other conditions.
Okay, Darren suggested, he agrees with Mr. McCollum, that the, the verbiage is right.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you ready for a motion?
I don't have any more questions.
Yeah, I don't have anything to discuss.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Reprieve Recovery Recovery Conditional Use Permit for a Residential Treatment Center, application number 22.016, located at 5525 West Mountain View Drive. Based on the findings, and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated June 7th, 2022, and is modified as follows, that those conditions are clarified as set forth in the, making sure I get the title of this right, conditional use agreement for Reprieve Recovery Center LLC, with the location indicated, and set forth, and with the additional condition that, um, the applicant sign this conditional use agreement, uh, which clarifies and states forth the conditions that were, uh, reviewed by Attorney Smith this evening.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, as well as the conditional use agreement for Reprieve Recovery Center LLC. as well as the conditional use agreement for Reprieve Recovery Center LLC. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, discussion decision, gun range discussion.
Okay, so I thought we had everything ironed out with our doing our new fees. And all I created is myself a hornet's nest all the time, it seems like, with nonstop calls of people that want exceptions to the rules, you know? And so I'm just wondering if maybe since I haven't been involved in this previously, until this time, there it seems like there's lots of things that have have come up. And I'm thinking maybe I should relook at it and present some more. Like I had a police jurisdiction down Syracuse that come up and do their practices here. So they're out-of-towners, but they love doing it up here. They rent it for a half a day and they've been renting it for $25 and now it's $75. I've had church organizations call and say, hey, we've always been able to get these places for free, now it's saying we can't do that, what? You know, and so I guess, and then you have the people that say, hey, we're kind of nonprofit, what? So I don't know how, I really don't know how to deal with the whole thing, to tell you the truth. If you have any suggestions, I'd be happy to take them. I didn't think we were being unreasonable, but I didn't realize how much. And I'm not being flippant about it or anything like that, I'm just saying I didn't realize that it would, you know, those amounts that we changed them to would create such a a problem.
If a group from Syracuse comes all the way up to Morgan to use a facility, why don't they use other facilities that are much closer?
I think it's, I think it's because it's it's inexpensive.
Because it's 25.
It's inexpensive for them.
Yeah.
And they like to keep up on their skills, you know, and they can't afford to to go to some of the other places to do that kind of thing, so.
Move up here and being a police officer or sheriff's deputy, then they don't have to worry. It's here.
I can share some discussions I've had with clerk if you'd like.
Sure.
Because the revenue's actually gone down because less people are renting the facilities. A lot of them were out-of-town people that were using it. And I think, I don't know what the reason behind raising it, but I'd imagine it was to say, okay, well, let's at least pay and increase the revenues, and it's done the opposite. As far as what the clerk who reserves the range has has communicated to me.
I think we were more concerned about our residents being able to use the facility and not just having out-of-town resident or out-of-town people booking it up and our residents not being able to get it. But if if that's the case, we definitely don't want to.
And maybe that has worked, but it is very open now where it used to be very booked.
So I will add this though. That's a two-edged sword. Because just because revenue is down, it also may mean the costs are down. You know, the wear and tear on the facility is less.
Sure.
And we need to recognize that the revenue from those facilities, from our parks, from our gun range, those revenues from the rentals do not cover our costs. So they're tax subsidized. And that's been my biggest thing is, you know, I live in Croydon and the Croydon Park we rent out to folks to camp at, okay? And most of the summer in for the last 10 years that I've lived there, it's booked out every weekend by folks who don't live in the county. They pay a very cheap fee, or did, to reserve and use the facility. And then we subsidize it as taxpayers because we're paying for the facilities and maintenance. That's my biggest thing is I understand people complaining about it. But the only complaints I've gotten on the rifle range, because I've received a couple of calls too, has been folks who don't live in the county. And to that part of it, I say, well, it should be a benefit to those who live in the county, especially because they're the ones who are really covering the cost. Your $75 fee doesn't actually cover the cost. But that's that's my opinion on it. I agree there every time we change fees, I mean, I've got another one I will send out to you on the on the rental of the of the facility here, the auditorium from a group that's a nonprofit and has typically used it in the past, no charge. Those are tough to deal with because we've got all these one-off situations, so. I don't know, but I'm totally in favor of you investigating that. And if you feel like we need to make adjustments, I'm all ears, I think that's
All right, I'll look at it then, and if you're okay with that, I'll look at it and try and figure something out and try and think of all the different
See what other facilities charge and
And make some exceptions.
Do we know what other, what's the one off of Interstate 80 as you get out past the airport? Lee, Something Lee Gun Center? I'd be interested in how our rate compares to like other municipal or county facilities.
Well, I did have some someone send us Weavers. And and they're less than we raised ours to. And it is a nicer facility, but they have more money down there too.
Is that to book the full facility or just for one individual?
No, but they didn't, they really don't want to book the whole facility, and that was their thing is we don't need to book the whole facility, we just want to be able to shoot, but you're forcing us to book the whole facility.
Well, I think that's a limitation we have because other other places are set up where it can be individuals.
Yeah.
So overall, they're generating a lot more revenue because they got 20 people there, all paying their fee. Here, we're doing it to one individual at a time, they're getting the whole facility.
Yeah.
To somebody who wants to go with a group of friends or a group of family and shoot a bunch of them at once, it's really cheap per person, but for one individual, it is expensive and I can understand that. And maybe there's some solution there, maybe we need to change the facility somehow to accommodate that. And then again, maybe not, you know, I don't know.
It would be interesting, though, to see how Weber runs there.
So you you really can't unless you have a firearms
You'd have to have somebody up there on
Runster.
Whatever, master, whatever they are.
Range master.
Yeah.
So they're paying for that and they're charging cheaper, right?
But they have tons of people there.
But you could have 30 or 40 people there at a time, right? Each paying that fee instead of
I mean, that's why our rate's higher.
Yeah.
I'll just look at it and propose some and then we're just gonna
I think that's great.
We approve it, we'll live with it, I guess.
Okay.
Awesome. Cool. Anything else on that, Mr. Wilson?
No.
Good. All right, we will now move to our public hearing item. We have one item on the agenda. This is a discussion decision. From our planning department, a proposed amendment to the zone map of approximately 5.38 acres going from RR1 and A22 to R1-8 located approximately 5460 West Old Highway Road in Mountain.
Commissioners, nice to meet you, Lance Hassel. Hi, I had last time on our Zoom call, communication doesn't quite effectively as well as in person, so nice to be here in person. Yeah, as you as you stated, it is a matter of rezoning to parcel property to a to a smaller residential use for the property. There's two pieces, they'd be both for one zone to a R1-8, smaller residential. It does fit into the master plan. It's in harmony with the other areas of the objectives. The rezone will not diversely impact the adjacent properties, and there's adequate facilities and services for the property. I heard you last time, there's a number of concerns on traffic. And the people that had voiced concerns over it, so I ended up hiring a firm, an engineering firm, that did a formal study on it, and I think you have copies of it. If not, I can, I have copies I can distribute if you don't have it. What it essentially says is, and it had the lot, the design, the layout of the property, and would you like me to distribute it? Do you need copies?
I sent it to you guys at 4:05 because it wasn't included in the pack.
I haven't read it yet.
It should be in your 4:05.
Yep, he emailed it 4:05.
I sent it in to Bailey a few weeks ago, but I think it was missed. But for what it's worth, the rezone, they just went through a proptument, the volume, the trip generation, how much volume would come out of eight lots, given what the road can tolerate. And at the end of the day, it conclude therefore roadway can accommodate the project increase of 76 ADT, which is essentially how much would be generated out of eight lots being proposed for that specific plot of land. And that that seemed to be the larger concern. I know traffic is busy, but taking it to one step, we're at an expert who'd actually had a chance to look at it, analyze it, and come back with some thoughts on the actual flow of traffic.
So Lance, do you mind if I just say a couple of things?
Please.
I think all of us were present last time we discussed this. We discussed having a meeting with UDOT, Commissioner and Fackrell, and I sat down with UDOT and discussed with them a couple of other items, including this item. We actually discussed the issues that we see between Trapper's Loop Road and and the on-ramp, so that entire length of the road. We we know that it's busy, there's a lot of traffic on there. They wanted to postpone it a year. We pushed back and said, we don't want to postpone a year, look at it this year. So they are planning on analyzing that this year. So we we checked that box off, this is not a county road, it's a state road. But I do appreciate the applicant also providing this study. I want to make sure that that's also noted that two-lane road has, well, this two-lane road has capacity of 19,500, where the current ADT is 9,200. So it's very, as much as we like open roads, as much as we don't agree, you know, we don't want traffic, this road can take almost double the amount of traffic more than what it has now. So I, it doesn't appear that he said it would be negligible, he did say, no, it'll produce this many. But really compared to overall what that two-lane road can take, it's 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 a small amount. But I do appreciate you taking that the effort to do that, I don't think it's a requirement, but
Absolutely, thank you, Jared, I was, I wanted to make sure that we do this right.
I'll say with respect to the Atrans study, it suggests 14 traffic trips a day on average, eight and six morning and afternoon. That's consistent with everything I've heard in terms of average single-family uses in the state of Utah, it's just 13 and a half. So that's consistent. I also had the sheriff, I asked, you know, after the last hearing, there was talk of a number of accidents, and this is countywide, over two years, we've had 159 accidents with injuries. And nine of them came from that section of road.
Out of 159.
Out of 159. There was also
When you say that section, that's from Trapper's Loop to the off-ramp, correct?
Off-ramp, yeah. There also was concern about the lack of enforcement along the highway, and I haven't had time to count all of these out. But if you there's, on each page, you can see that there are a number of highlighted, those are all traffic stops by the sheriff's department along that section of highway. So it is, it is being monitored, I've never been pulled over there. But I have seen the sheriff out there and and they are pulling people over for speed. The other thing that the sheriff did after I talked to him was that he had, they set out the the trailer. Let me get to that.
The one that wasn't damaged.
And it was a, I can't remember what it said on it, drive carefully or please drive safely. And that was there for a one-week period. What's interesting is the trip count is kind of consistent with what you suggested, although it was closer to 10,000, not the 92, so we are within the range. And that trailer is interesting. It's the Stalker roadside log. And it's clear that we leave the county faster than we come into it. Because the average speed is 54 going out and 45 coming in. And it's posted at 45. And
You're gonna have to slow down.
It looks like
Because they're late for work.
59.2% of the vehicles were below the speed limit. 36.9 were moderately above it, and 3.9% were excessively above the speed limit. So there there is, there are occasions where people are flying through there. And so that's, I was just interested in, based on some of the comments that the public made, kind of where we were at, and I wanted to make sure there was enforcement going on. The accidents, they occur all over the county, Ben, there are some that are there, but it doesn't appear to be at an extraordinary rate compared to the other roads in the county. And I'm, I hope UDOT will come back with some mitigation measures, including crosswalks into the, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't have crosswalks into the park. They ought to be there, we need crosswalks at the intersection of Trapper's Loop and Old Highway. You've got kids that come in and out of the school and head over to the Sinclair for, you know, to hang out and to get some after-school snack or treat or whatever you want to call it, and, you know, they have to negotiate that, and it is a busy road, and I don't, you know, particularly at given times of the day, and I suspected if we were to set this trailer out during ski season, that we would have a higher traffic count, because this was in the spring, so, but after the resort had closed. So anyway, just some other information with respect to the traffic concerns that were raised.
It's great to have some some real stats and detail on it, so thank you. Okay. I'll bring up just one comment, and I'll say this, I guess, knowing that we're not here to discuss layout of your subdivision or your proposed layout. But one thing that I would note, because this won't come back, if it does move forward, it would not come back before this group being less than 10 lots, it would just go to the planning commission. There is a stub road in the subdivision to the northwest. I'd love to see this stub out towards that direction, or at minimum have a right-of-way for that road. I think we have far too many subdivisions that have been planned not together, and we end up with issues with that. So that's my only comment, and again, that has nothing to do with what we're discussing tonight, but just wanted to make that while I had the opportunity.
Understood, and we've talked about this before, the neighbors.
Thank you.
So Lance, I did go down and visit the property since I had the most vocal about this whole thing. I visited the property and along the same issue, it's not right now in part of what we were trying to come up with, but that is steep. How are you going to put a road up a steep climb like that to make more homes on top? Now, if you're going to do it down to the bottom and ask for a different density or anything like that, I'm just bringing this up, you've got a steep, steep hill to climb up, and I know your neighbor, neighbors both talked to me about it, and I mean, that is steep. And you want you propose to put homes up above that, and you want us to move it out of the A20 zone so that you can do that, I don't see how you're going to do that. Because I know there's some ordinances within the county code
25% incline.
Okay, this is not 25%.
25% slope.
Slope, well.
Is it 25% slope?
That's a great question, Commissioner Fackrell, and one that will have to be addressed at a future point.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, that's something that I observed from down there, and I know that the people, your neighbors, were kind of concerned about that. And I mean, whatever you do, it's yours and the planning commission's. But that's just my concerns. And I just, you know.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's just, those are my concerns.
I agree.
And I mean, the other neighbors to the west of you, they wouldn't put the subdivision down low and left the open space up on the down low and left the open space up on the hill, so.
Yeah, I think we'll have to address it through retaining walls and other things that, the engineers will look at that when it comes to that point.
It's gonna be a sure, tariffs all the way up.
Okay, any other questions regarding the zoning map amendment? Or traffic study regarding that?
So which are we, in the-
I'll make a motion to adjourn public meeting and convene public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in public hearing.
Isn't it real call?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
No, not for public hearing.
Okay.
So Mr. Hassel, if you don't mind, we'll allow you to sit down, we'll allow the public, if they so choose, to come up during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Once that's ended, we'll go back into our public meeting and move forward on the item. Okay. Seeing no public comments.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Second, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We are now back in the public meeting, and we'll look for a motion on the zone map amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hassel rezone map amendment, application number twenty-two point zero-one-five, changing the zoning district from RR1 and A-twenty to R-one-eight, based on the findings listed in the SAC report dated July fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second to approve, excuse me, the zone map amendment, application number twenty-dash-one-five, dash-zero-one-five. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I didn't vote.
Are you abstaining, or are you?
I'm just trying to decide. Work out the details, okay? I'll say aye.
The motion is unanimous and passes. Okay. We'll now move to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Fackrell.
Just a few things. I'm still, I'm working with Cassell on the things we have within the county that we need to work on. You guys are aware of Nine Springs tomorrow. AT&T, we're still trying to get coverage throughout the county for everybody, so that way, when we have a fire up in East Canyon, which we had yesterday, which only covered thirty-six hundred square feet, but it could have been very bad because there was no phone service. So, so I'm working with that one. Liberty Broadband is actually getting a lot of towers out there now, a lot more, a lot more coverage. Dehive, I have no update on them. They just basically said ten homes up there in Mountain Green up above the Highlands are not gonna get coverage. And so I'm working with them on that, and Liberty Broadband's trying to get that for them.
Work from Liberty on internet for the fairgrounds?
Yes, they're gonna get it in.
Well, I've heard that news for a while, but okay.
I'd like to have it going tested before.
Yeah, we gotta test it.
Next week?
That'd be wonderful.
Okay, 'cause I'll just call him, tell him he has to do it, period.
We'll have a disaster.
Yeah, if we can't test it, it'll be a mess. We've got, we ordered all those iPads to make things easier for them to check folks'
Yeah, it will be there.
Tickets and stuff, but without internet, those are kind of useless.
I agree. As far as something that was brought up in our discussion on, in the public comment time, as far as bike lanes go, that bike lane that is down by the airport is supposed to be, according to the agreement, and according to our, let me get his email, or not email, text. From Josh Cook, our new county planner. And he says it is supposed to be... Wherever it went. I don't know where it went. It was supposed to be six, wasn't it six feet? Six feet, and it's not. It's four feet, if that, in certain areas along that. So, somewhere or another, that needs to be taken care of. I don't know how you can work that out.
Well, the county doesn't have the right-of-way with it.
We don't?
No.
I thought we owned that ground.
We maximize the right-of-way with it. They, they put that in, they didn't just repair the road, they took it up and resurfaced the entire thing. They didn't just repair the fence, they took it out and replaced the entire fence. I did see the signs, the ten signs. I'll have to look at exactly what was supposed to be on that. I think it's just restricted access. I don't think there'll be a problem with that.
To the airport, that's it.
Yeah, and so that lane comes up, and then it hits the ramp out, and then it connects, then there's the sidewalk, the six-foot sidewalk that's off of the right-of-way.
Right.
And that takes it up to the, the edge of where Silver Leaf begins, which I think was part of the Phase Four plat, but I'm not sure. That may have been part of a prior plat. And then from Silver Leaf, it should cross the road, and when phase is what we're called Phase Six, then it would be on the other side of road, and the trail should go on all the way up and connect to the Silver Leaf Trail on that other side of the road. So they, they have the bike lane path to the point where they have the six-foot sidewalk. And then where that ends, there should be a crosswalk eventually and a trail that runs on the other side of Silver Leaf up as those phases develop.
Okay, so my question is more down on the airport, by the airport. That's very, very narrow for bicyclists and, and it's used frequently, bicyclists and walkers, hikers. Yeah, it's used all the time. People in, I saw, I saw mothers with their twins and their kids and everything else walking up there, and then you have bicycles, and it's, it's not wide enough, it's not six feet. And if it were, we've got painted lines, but we don't have six feet. And the cars that are going up there, it's narrowed down. And so I'm just saying that if that is not our property, the airport is not our property, then I can see the problem. It's the same as we have all over the county.
But we own the airport.
Yeah, I know, so we own the airport, why can't we get the pavement or the bicycle lane or whatever we need to, to go out to the fence or close to the fence?
Well, one is drainage.
Okay.
And the other, we worked with the, the airport managers to the location of the trail. And I know that the developer proposed even bringing the trail inside of the fence, but the airport didn't want that, and I can understand why.
I can understand that, too.
Because there's the fence.
Yeah. It would just be nice.
Sounds like a discussion we could probably have.
So I'm just bringing that up to your attention, so that way we can, we can either mitigate it or go through with other things. Now, also Brett Heiner came to me and requested right now to do a, a bid on some of the hazards that we have on the Cottonwood Creek Trail, that lower end where the mobiles are. And so he's gonna get a bid for us to see what it would cost for him to do it or somebody else to do it. So he'll be bringing that to us at a later time, so we don't have litigation possib-, possibility. Because I don't know what's gonna happen on the other part we were doing. And so, just, just for that. The other thing, the last thing I have for now, is after being at the fair, the parade yesterday, I would like to propose that we as county commissioners are in the parade to let the people know who we are.
Can we do a cardboard cutout?
No, I didn't, I don't mean in the river. I was thinking we could maybe possibly-
We have done that in the past.
I, I think it would be nice for us to all get-
Particularly, we've done it for the fair parade.
Mike Newton's old truck can go through there, or his fire engine.
I'd be happy to do that if you want.
So.
In the past, we have done it for the fair parade, since it is the Morgan County Fair.
That's right.
It's been a couple of years.
I mean, what, since we're gonna be in the ballpark, are you gonna be there again?
Let's just have Blaine be our mascot.
No, I think you guys deserve to be there, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Fackrell. Commissioner McConnell.
So the airport, the contractor sent a request to Commissioner Anderson and I for help on their extra fuel charges. We discussed it previously, but I thought I would bring it up again. They have completed the work there, they did spread the piles. It looks better from my perspective.
It does.
It does look better.
Could they have a written proposal for that, or is it a?
No, they just said change order, they'd love it for it.
Failed.
Pay for it. But I don't know the, but I guess if you want me to try to work out some resolution with them, I can try to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have any other, anything new to add from what I discussed before, but considering it's brought up, I think it's, I think it's one thing to bid a project and have vendors say this is the cost of an item, and you know what you need to do to do the work, and then that's your amount. But it's another thing for you to bid a project, a vendor, to say, here's the cost of the item, and then within a matter of months, the vendor, which would be the person supplying the fuel, says, now it's gonna cost you double. And I, I think that's, depending on the situation, hard to force those extra costs on, on, on a contractor. I, you know, every, every cost that I see now, all vendors are saying, our price is for what we're showing you today. It can change tomorrow. So that's a very hard road to go down when you're starting to say, hey, we think this needs to all be on the contractors, versus saying, okay, let's, let's make sure we're looking at this as the best way possible, and knowing, you know, the other thing is time with materials. We're having some materials that are out, generators, they're out almost a year, if we were to order it right now. So I, there's something to be said about this, the times that we're in right now and how we look at things. I guess that's my comments. I'm not, I'm not saying yea or nay on it, but man, it's hard to force these contractors to mid, mid-project, you now have to pay more money due to a vendor telling you it's cost more money, and yeah, sorry, you're gonna have to pay for it, so. I know UDOT has stipulation in their process where they say if it increases a certain amount and a certain percentage, then, then we work through that process with you, and they allow for, for that, so those are my comments.
I guess my comment would be, I, I, I just don't like the way it came to us, you know? When I have a situation like that, I would hope that they would come to you and say, look, here's, here's our situation, here's where we're at, how can we work this out? What can we work it out? Not just send you a bill for it and just expect you to pay the thing, you know? I don't mind helping them, but I don't, I personally don't think we just take the full...
Yeah, that's more the-
That's what they're saying.
They took your approach the second time, as opposed to the first.
Yeah, that's what they're saying. They're saying this time somewhat of what you're saying, Commissioner, so.
Okay. So is the question, do we bring that back for some more discussion?
Maybe, Commissioner McConnell, like you mentioned, if we can try and negotiate, maybe just not a full, here it is, pay for it, versus, let's, let's come to negotiate a price and see, see what we can come up with. Is that your-
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Because I can't imagine they didn't have some contingency in there.
Right. Okay. I think that's reasonable, for sure.
That's all I got.
Okay. I just had two items. Number one, just wanted to publicly thank the Chamber of Commerce and all those who worked very hard yesterday for the Fourth of July activities. There's a great fireworks show and lots of fun activities, parade, river, cardboard regatta, games, et cetera. So thank you to the chamber for all your work on that. Those who are listening, maybe take that back to the rest of the chamber, please. And then the other item I had is I got a call from the commander of the local American Legion post. They've historically used the auditorium here in the county building for a yearly meeting and have done so free of charge in the past. So she asked me, with our current fee schedule, what can be done about that? I thought I would bring that back to you all for your thoughts. Again, it's another one of those situations, we've had a few of them where, we've made some exceptions. I personally certainly support the American Legion and what they do, and I think they, you know, do good things, so.
What percentage of the use of these facilities is by groups that we would even want to charge? I, obviously, we only get the exceptions to the policy here.
There's, there's a lot of people that use it for family get-togethers, for baby blessings and baptisms and things like that, and they should, I mean, it's a cheap facility to rent.
Yeah, they should probably cover that cost. For public groups, I, I feel like, you know, it is a public facility, and I think it ought to be used for public things. I agree with charging those who want to use it for personal things or for business-related, but for public groups like that, I'm in favor of maybe allowing them to do that. We probably ought to come up with a little better format and-
A policy or something?
I'll try and figure, I'll try and figure it out.
Maybe, maybe in conjunction with that.
Are you saying you're gonna write a policy?
Yeah, with the, with the parks and stuff, it'll be a very rough draft, but between the two attorneys, I think we can get it figured out.
For now, let's waive the fees before in Legion.
Okay. Their meeting is the first Saturday in August.
The American Legion.
It's gotta be local for us.
But they'll be in soon.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too. Okay. All right, that's all I had. Commissioner Anderson?
I also want to comment on the, the Fourth of July. It was just an amazing, it was just the, the amount of residents that came, and I think even residents outside the county, just an immense amount. I think we're gonna need to start addressing traffic, food. I went over to the, for lunch, and man, we, we had, I think, three food trucks there, and the lines were extremely long and not in the shade, and so I think there's an opportunity there for food vendors and traffic coming off the freeway. They were back to clear up the freeway. So I, I think as this continues to grow, we just need to make sure we're accommodating for that, because I think it's just gonna keep growing. The fireworks show, I sat on my back porch and watched the whole thing, and it was an amazing fireworks show, so really enjoyed that, and want to also publicly thank the Morgan Chamber of Commerce. Master Plan for the, I guess, I think we're calling it Park, Fairground Park, I believe is what we're calling it. Well, I checked with Brett today, with, I believe within about two weeks, we're supposed to have that restroom facility completed and up and open for use, and that's been a long time coming. But the Master Plan Park, we're gonna try and find some dates next week that I'll send out to you guys, where they're gonna give us a, a start of a concept drawing and something we can start to look at and figure out what we, after we had the meeting, I think the meeting was about a month ago, or a month and a half ago, so. That's updates I've got.
So they're speaking of the facilities over at the pickleball courts, the power is now there, so there is lighting for those who like to stay up late and play pickleball. And the water is run and ready to go for the restroom, so it's great news. On our way.
And I think our rec department is gonna try and put something together for that.
Football tournament?
Yeah.
And so what's that gonna be at the pickleball court?
Like, do a, do a tournament or even a league of-
So, I understood that we need four courts or whatever it is for the pickleballs.
But just a local tournament. I'm not lying about bringing it.
Well, I think she's thinking of doing a rec league.
Yeah.
You know, she's thinking of, because we have a facility, let's use it, let's sign people up and actually have them using it, but-
But maybe a couples thing or something like that.
That's a great idea.
Just for some entertainment?
Need something to get my arm back.
And I think not only the chamber, but all the people that- And I think not only the chamber, but all the people that donate to, to that cause, you know, the, the trash and all, all the, I know, I mean, that's the only thing they asked me to do is make sure that, see if I could get a free receptacle from Arrow Disposal brought us up one.
Oh, that's great.
And they, I mean, people are good. People are, so I appreciate that because that helps a lot.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything else?
No, nothing else.
Okay. Well, thank you, commissioners, for your time. Thank you to the public for sticking with us. It's a fairly short meeting. We appreciate it. Do we have a motion?
Executive.
Why don't you go ahead and make that motion?
I'd be glad to. I move that we go into closed session to discuss potential litigation and to discuss competency of an individual.
Character and professional competency of an individual.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a-
Second.
A motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Factral?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We will move into an executive session, following which we will return to our meeting and then-